Okay, great. Well, welcome everyone and thank you for joining us today for our study session on the handbook. So Dr. Bregy, I'll turn it over to you or to Deb.
Great. I'll just turn it right over to Deb. This is kind of the follow-up meeting to the handbook that we started in October.
So let me just give you a little background about why we're here today. I was following up with Dr. Bregy about how things are going, as I usually do after working with a district. And he had mentioned that you had not approved your governance handbook yet. And so, of course, I felt personally offended. No, not really. I just, I really wanted to move that forward because I thought it was important for you to do that, especially in times of crisis. I think it's important to have sort of a roadmap for how we agree to work together. And so I asked if you had a little time, and thank you for making time for me to share with you, just some things that we've been working on at CSBA, working with different districts in times of crisis. And this doesn't just apply to this crisis, but what I'm going to show to you and talk to you about really briefly, just to start with, applies to boards working in any kind of crisis situation, whether it be our California fires, or earthquakes, or, you know, school closures for any reason. And, you know, this is going to be with us for a long, a while. This isn't just something that's going on this next few weeks. I have a feeling that this is going to impact us for at least the next 18 months and probably impact the way we look at education in the long term. So with your permission, I'd like to share a screen with you. It's a little quick five-slide presentation I put together, helping boards work in times of crisis. Is that okay? Can we start there?
Sure.
Is that okay with everybody? Okay. So let me get my screen up. Okay, Dr. Bregy, let me do it before in our test, and now it's not letting me do it. Let me try again. Can you all see my screen?
Yeah, it's very small.
Okay, let me open it up. How about now? Better? Can everyone see it?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I wanted to talk to you about just how, why it's so important to really show good leadership during these times of crisis. As you can imagine, our world is a little topsy-turvy with people getting, and I think one of the biggest issues that people are having right now is not knowing who to believe or who to listen to. Do we listen to the doctors? Do we listen to the mayors? Do we listen to the governor? Do we listen to the president? Who do we listen to? And what message is resonating with us? So I think really what your community needs right now, and all communities in crisis need right now, is clear, consistent information, especially from board members who are speaking with one voice about the progress that you're making toward, you know, the changing environment that we have. And so it's really, really important to present a unified message, not only to your district children and parents, but also to your employees and the general public. I have to say that I'm here in LA now, and LA Unified has done a pretty good job, oh, they haven't done a very good job of getting laptops and computers out to kids, they still, they're short about 300,000, if you can imagine that. But I think they're doing a good job with their website of it being sort of a portal for all the information, where they're being pretty open and honest about the progress they're making and the hurdles that they're overcoming. So really, really important to have a unified message because you need to sort of be the voice of calm and reason, especially around children's education when people don't really know who to believe. Right now, I think in the entire state, and I'm sure this applies to you, there's a really deep concern about reaching non-English speaking populations and with appropriate translations for everything, and maintaining individual instruction for students with disabilities. I'm sure that's a focus for all the districts in the state, and probably you're experiencing some of that as well. So, but, you know, you guys, from what I've talked to Michael about and what I've seen in the local newspapers and on TV, you seem to be, really have done an incredible job of transitioning, you know, other districts I've talked to, I tell them, I use, I like to use the analogy, if you had a factory that made rocking chairs today, and tomorrow I told you you had to make rocket ships, there would be a lot of things that would have to change, right? In order for you to be able to do that, you'd have to get new technology, train new people, probably have new manufacturing techniques, new raw resources. And that's what we've asked you to do as, as school districts. We've really asked you to sort of change everything that you do and provide a whole nother level of services. And we've asked teachers to do it in a way that they've never had to do it before, that many of them weren't trained to do, to provide information in. And so it's just a whole new paradigm. And we were asked to not, you know, do it over a six-month period. We were asked to do it in a day. And so really, really, I really give applause out to your district and other districts who have been able to make this transition. And, you know, from what I've heard talking to Dr. Bregy, you guys were really supportive of him doing that, and you allowed him to take the reins when he needed to take the reins and make quick decisions and not have to run everything by you, because this really was a time when superintendents really had to make quick decisions and pivot quickly, which I'm sure Michael can attest to. You have a unique role, just like I said, in making sure that your superintendent could make decisions quickly, having the trust in him and the staff to be able to make the decisions that need to be made in a very timely fashion. So a few things superintendents and board members can do to make sure that they're doing this correctly and really working very effectively in this time of great uncertainty. Let your superintendent lead. They're there on the ground every single day, knowing what crises are happening, what fires to put out, if you will. And you need to really have that 30,000-foot view of things happening in your community, your community's concerns, conveying those to your superintendent, making sure they're aware of the hotspots in your community so that they can give you correct information to help them disseminate that information to your community. Very, very important that you have a designated spokesperson during this time. I don't know if you guys have a communication person, I think you did when we met. Do you have a communications person or communications specialist at the district?
We do.
You do. So making sure that you have your designated spokesperson, that you're all getting the same information. I mean, now more than ever, you know how important it is for the board and superintendent to have robust and regular communication, now more than ever, because I know that you're getting questions from your community about what, what you're doing and maybe some of the hiccups that are happening. You really need to be getting correct information from your superintendent and staff so that you can help them and the community to dispel any misinformation and make sure the correct information gets to your parents. This is really the time when, you know, I really tell dist, our board members, and I know it's hard to do sometimes, but never to publicly challenge the decisions that are being made. If you have problems with the decisions that are being made, really keep that internal, talk to your superintendent about it, talk to each other about it, work it out, but really present a united front to your community, because again, they're feeling so uncertain about everything, from do I wear a mask, do I don't wear a mask? Where, do I stay in? When can I go out? What are, you know, what are we doing? Not to mention the additional burden of changing their paradigm in the workplace if they're working and learning to work from home, as well as homeschooling their children, which I'm sure they're going to have a much greater appreciation for the work that we do when this is all over, after trying to homeschool children. But, you know, there's so much misinformation and confusing information that the last thing they need from you guys is any confusing or conflicting information. It's really time to pull together as a team and really make your community feel at ease with the work that you're doing. And then finally, in addition to making sure you have a unified message, promote messages that are supported by the full leadership team. This isn't the time for individual opinions. This is really the time for you guys to pull together and support the decisions that you're making. Celebrate some of the things that you're doing well. If you're feeding kids well, if you've gotten laptops or iPads or Chromebooks into the hands of all the kids, celebrate that, because you're one of the few districts who has in the state. Show, talk about the successes you're having. I mean, one teacher said to me in a district I worked with last week, who happened to be on one of, I had reviewing this presentation, she said to me, "I'm closer to my students now, working with them remotely, than I feel like I was in the classroom, because I talk to them every day. Some of them check in early, a lot of them check in early, just because they want to chit chat. So I hear about what they're doing, I've met their parents, I've met their pets, I know what their home looks like." You know, she really felt like she had a different level of closeness with her students, and she's celebrating that. And I'm like, that's a story you should tell. That would be a great story for the district to tell. Make time for all of you as individuals, again, you're the spokesperson, you're the cheerleaders for your district, so make time to connect with your community. Share positive messages through video, on social media, any way that you feel you're connected. Share those positive messages with your community. Share information with your community. Share the fact that you're hopeful about the future, that you have gratitude and compassion for everything that people are doing, and be that sense of calm, that sense of balance for your community, especially when it comes to their most precious asset, their children. And you guys are doing this, so kudos to you. You really are supporting the staff and what they're doing and helping them make some tough decisions in a difficult time. I would ask you this question, you guys, are there anything, any obstacles holding you back from doing your best work at this point in time? Do you feel like there are any things, any things that you're, anything that you're doing that you feel like you could be doing better? And with that, I'm going to go back to the screen. Are there any obstacles standing in the way of you doing your best work at this point in time? Or do you feel like everybody's pulled together and you're doing what you can to support the staff's efforts and district efforts?
So if we'd like, we can start with, we can start with Noah, just so that we have order, or how do you want to do this, Deb? You tell me.
Yeah, you could just, I can't see all of you, I can only see some of you. So I'd say unless we get out of order, just hold your hand. Why don't, if you could see everybody, Isabel, why don't you just have people hold up their hand if they want to speak, and then call on them, if that's okay?
Okay, so we'll start with Noah. Do you have anything to say, Noah?
Yeah, I would just say to Deb's last point, the only obstacles I see that are in front of us right now is building the consistency within the remote learning with our faculty. I think there are some very strong faculty doing wonderful things, and we have others that really, for lack of a better word, need some support. And I haven't really clicked in with the whole home learning, so that I feel...
You know what? I'm sorry, you know what? You're breaking. I don't know why, there was a little bit of like static in between some of your words, so I missed your first word, and if you could just start again. I'm not sure if everybody else experienced what I did, I'm almost certain we did. So let's begin again, please.
I'm not going to remember it verbatim, but I was just saying that it's the inconsistency in effective instruction for the remote learning is, I think, our obstacle right now. I think we, the staff, the administration, and the teachers have come to a wonderful agreement to try to deliver this home learning. I think this is something that we need to build upon and not look toward the end of, because I think it's going to be a part of our schooling in the fall. So I think we need to get, before the end of this school year, we really need to get a grasp on those that are doing it effectively, and make sure that those that need support get that support so children, students don't suffer from a lack of instruction.
That's a comment, Noah, that's a common, a common comment that we have, that we have, you know, teachers in every district that I work with at very different skill levels, right, in terms of distance learning. And so I really encourage you to encourage them to work together and have those who know how to do it, maybe teach some that don't know how to do it, and really work together as teams and look at what's working and what's not working. And like I said, I think this is going to be, we're in this for the long haul, so it's important that everybody get on a consistent level and understand, you know, from an innovation standpoint, what they have to do, and share those innovative strategies with one another. Anybody else have a comment about what, anything you think is holding us, standing in our way of...
Mel.
I think that how we, how we have performed as a board, particularly under these circumstances that Debbie was talking about, I think we've done very well. I think, I think we have been, done everything that you've talked about. I think we've been united in supporting staff. I think we have recognized that staff had just an enormous challenge ahead of them. And, and I think, as far as I know, I think, I think that we have done collectively a good job of being supportive. And, I mean, in the long run, I think that there are ways, in the long run, that, that our board can do better. I don't think that we function as a board optimally, but during, as I say, during this crisis, I think we've done very, very well. And if, as I understood it, if we're going to be going through this handbook, maybe page by page, and seeing what, what each of us thinks about it, and how it might get changed or not changed, I think that that, if we can go through that process, I think that it will, it will show us a lot, a lot of ways that we can do better as a board in the long run.
Great, thank you, Mel. Anyone else?
I kind of get the feeling that we're going to just go in around the horseshoe, so I'll just jump in and say, I think also we've done a really good job being unified and communicating clearly with the community. I think we've, we've really supported the cabinet and staff in their, not just their efforts of execution, but really ideologically in terms of how we value education and teaching, you know, and made this segue from spring break enrichment to remote learning. So I think that, I think that our work has actually been, been quite unified in, in purpose and in execution. So that's really all my comments on right now. I guess we're going to go through this thing page by page, or maybe we should talk about, you know, if we're okay with certain pages, we can kind of gloss over those and go on to the ones that are the more challenging pain points.
Yep, that's my intention, that's my intention, Tristan, because a lot of it's just a pretty boilerplate stuff with regard to norms, et cetera. I think the protocols is where we're going to spend the majority of our time. And I think I gave you some homework, I think Michael sent it out to you and asked you all to, if you didn't like the way I wrote a protocol, because that's, that's my writing, or it's just our samples, actually, from CSBA, modified a little bit to, to you specifically after we had our workshop, give us, give it a shot. Take a shot at rewriting it, or rewording it, however you feel, because again, I want to remind you that this governance handbook is your document, it's not my document. It's your roadmap for how you agree to operate as a board. I just gave it a first shot to kind of put it together and give you some thinking points and talking points, but it's really your document, and it has to be something you all agree on, otherwise no one's going to abide by it, right? It's just a piece of paper that lays on the shelf like a lot of our bylaws and, and board policies and things like that. And that we want this to be a living, working document that you guys all can refer to for guidance in the future, and that when you have new board members, which, you know, you may have at the end of this year, that it gives them a starting point to understand the guidelines and how this board agrees to work together. Okay, anybody else have a quest, or Rochelle, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, I just want to echo Mel's words. I have felt very, very comfortable during this crisis time with my board. I thought we'd been very, very, very effective, and I think we've been able to communicate. I think we've done a good job of being unified, and we've been very much in, when we're still able to resolve the memorandum of understanding, we worked very well together. I thought we did an amazing job. I really thought this afternoon was going to be a little bit more about developing the handbook that, for governance, rather than, I know we just talked about, this was a, this crisis situation really was terrific for us as a board, because we did work so good together, but we need to perhaps go back and go through the handbook and talk about some of it. I personally was more interested in some kind of a format, because I felt that the format, the way it was presented lacked a lot of, I think it could be done in a better way. So that was just my, my, plus a few of the issues, but the format was the big issue with me, so I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Okay, Rochelle, and yes, that's what we're going to be doing moving forward here. We're going to be going by it page by page. And again, like I said, that was just a, it's a sample CSBA template that we use, and I just added to it based on our conversations when I was there last, but it's yours to do whatever you like with, however you'd like to do it. So you each have a copy of it, correct, in front of you?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's, let's dig right in. I'm going to just open mine up.
My first, my first comment is on page three, if anybody has anything earlier.
Page three?
Yes.
That would be the page that reads "Our Goals."
Unity is the purpose, right?
Yeah, it's a minor comment, and, and all it is, is that goal number seven indicates elevate our reputation so that the 25% of Beverly Hills students attending private schools, I just want to say that I don't think any of us know whether it's 25% or more than that, or less than that. I don't know where that number came from, maybe it was just somebody's pure guess. I, I was wondering if anybody else has any ideas about it, but if we were going to finalize something, I think I'd rather, since we don't know, I think I'd rather not have the percentage in there.
Yeah, Mel, that was a, somebody mentioned that during our workshop, it was in my notes. And so that's why I put in 25%, but if you want to, I'm amending this as we're speaking, so if you want to just take out the percentage, how about if we just change it to elevate our reputation so that Beverly Hills students attending private schools want to go to school here? We don't have to put a percentage.
If everybody else is agreeable.
Yeah, I'm fine, I'm good with that.
Okay, great, done.
Deb, are you, Deb, are you able to put that up on the screen so that we can, because I know some people don't have it in front of them.
I think I can. Let's try that again, shall we? Let's see if I can do that.
If not, I can do it.
I think I can do it. Have you got it?
Yeah.
No?
Yes, if you can make it a little bigger.
I will do my best.
Great.
Kind of my full screen. There we go.
So Isabel, do you think the best way to do this is to be, go page by page and then see if anybody wants to chime in on that page, or go board member by board member?
And so I think what we could do is if, if everyone's agreeable and it's not a big deal, like, I think we could just put our thumbs up. If somebody wants to say something, then, you know, just, I, I think we should, I'd be able to see if you're not putting your thumb, your thumbs up, and then I'll, I'll call on you. Does that sound like a fair, or you can say something on the chat group, and Dr. Bregy can call on you if I'm not able to, because I'm seeing different screens because of Debbie's presenting, it's a little off today. So if, you know, if it's something contentious, I think we can go around and have a discussion. Does that sound fair? Like, I'm agreeable to Mel, I don't have to say anything about what he just made this, I just think we should just put our thumbs up, and if you're not agreeable, then I think we should say, I'd like to say something, and then I'll, you know, we can circle back to you.
So if you can see my screen, I'm going to let you edit in live time, I mean, in real time. So as you guys tell me you want to make an edit, I'm going to edit this, and then I'll send it back to Dr. Bregy. Is that okay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so let's, why don't you, who has the next comment in, on earlier pages?
I have a comment on page four, number 11.
Number 11, increase use of IT in all classroom teaching and instruction.
I think we should change it to technology. IT is information technology, that's the department that handles all of the technology pieces related to the district, but technology is what we actually want to increase in the classrooms for teaching and instruction.
Okay, everybody okay?
Yeah, do, do we want to add the word "home" now? Classroom and home, teaching and instruction? Since the rules have changed.
That's great, I love that.
Good idea.
Got it. Okay. Anything else on page four?
Well, why, how we, what's the difference between the word "teaching" and "instruction"? Why do we have both of those? Do they mean different things? Or should it just, classroom and home instruction?
I mean, it, I mean, you could look at that as being, you know, if you're, if you're teaching, it doesn't need to be live teaching, it could be, it's like teaching and learning, you know, it, it, it's...
I think "learning" is a better word than "instruction." I think there's, there's teaching, which is putting forth the instruction, and there's learning, which is taking in the instruction. So I think the word "instruction" kind of doubles up on teaching, and if you need another word, then I think "learning" would be better.
I agree.
That works.
Okay, done.
I'd like to change so that I think that the one that's number 11 should move, I think it's more important, and we, we're sort of putting these in order of importance. I think technology is a very important thing that's figured over, and I think it should move up in terms of importance. Instead of being 11, it should be a higher.
Well, the reason, the reason they're in this order is, if you recall at our workshop, I had you all take a star and put it next to the ones that were most important to you in critical goals. And so the first ones are the ones that received the most stars. So number one received six stars, number two received four stars, number three received three stars, four and five received one star each, and all of the others didn't receive any stars, but I still put them in the, in the goal section. So that's why they're in the order that they're in, Rochelle.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else on page four? Okay, hearing nothing, I'll move on to, anybody have anything on page five?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
I would just like to mention, in the middle of the page, the section where we provide support through our behavior and actions, the third one down, to me, is of huge importance. And, and I, and I think this is a, maybe, maybe not as, as, maybe a little too vague, "upholding board-approved district policies." I think that is key to our functioning together as a board. And actually, one of our bylaws reads this way, "Individual board members are expected to comply with all board bylaws and established policies." And I just wonder whether, whether this is clear enough in that regard.
Mel, why don't we reference that board policy in this, in this section? So "upholding board-approved district policies per policy number..."
It's policy bylaw, bylaw number 9271.
Or BB 9271, would that be sufficient?
Well, yeah, I think so.
Okay.
In a way, you might, you might say in accordance with bylaw number 9271.
How about the word "decisions" in there also?
Pardon me?
Decisions, things that we decide. In other words, not only policies, but decisions that we make.
That's actually a little later in your protocols, Rochelle.
That's a different subject.
Yeah, and later in the protocols, it calls about explaining no votes and upholding or standing behind board decisions. That's actually a whole section that explains that in your protocols, a little further in the document.
So if we're going to add the bylaw 9271, I'd also like to add the board bylaw 9310, which also reads in pertinent part here, "Board policies are binding on the district to the extent that they do not conflict with federal or state law and are consistent with the district's collective bargaining agreements." So can we change that, "upholding board-approved district policies in accordance with BB 9271 and BB 9310"?
Would you guys want to weigh in on that?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. I think we don't need the word "board-approved district policies." In order to become policy, it has to be board-approved, correct? So that's a redundancy. You could just say "upholding district policies in accordance with the..." So that's a redundancy. You could just say upholding district policies in accordance with those.
Okay.
I'm fine with that.
All right, anything else on that page?
I think that board policy 9200, the board is a unit of responsibility over the district and board members have no individual responsibility. I think 9271 is, is part of that. I have it as 9200, but I also see it showing up as 9271. But I think it's important to remind, remind everyone that the board is a unit of responsibility over the district.
Yeah.
And then it continues with similar language from 9271, which already has been stated, the board members have no individual responsibility.
9200 is the one that I reference the most probably, Isabel, and that is the limits of board member authority is usually what that one's called. And it basically says that no individual board member has the authority to make decisions, spend money, direct staff. It's, it's broader than just, it's broader than just upholding district policies. It really limits the, the ability of individual board members, one board member, to do anything, because the power lies within the unit and the vote of three, right? So the, the majority vote. And so I don't know that it belongs there, but let's, let's think about that. And maybe it belongs in, along with one of our, with one of our protocols. It might be more appropriate with one of our protocols. But it's up to you, wherever you want to put it.
No, I'm, 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 I'm okay with, with holding on to it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so anything else on page five? Nothing under the Act, we act as community leaders five, nothing under that? Okay, let's look at number six then. That delineated, and this, these were your guys' words, I just put it in here, what the board needs from the superintendent and what the superintendent needs from the board. Is there anything you want to add to that, those two columns?
I'm fine with it, I'll say this.
Anybody else? I also thought you should insert in this, and I don't have it, because I didn't have it digitally, but my suggestion was if you see in yellow, do you remember when the cabinet, cabinet intentions for positive working environment was presented to you at our workshop?
I have it here.
Yeah, I think that we should add that to the government, governance handbook. So when you amend this, it should include that as an addendum, in my opinion, but that's up to you.
I'll agree with that.
I'm, I'm fine with that. However, there is one item in here that we have changed and I want to call it to your attention.
Okay.
One of the items says, board member questions from board made, board meeting packets to be provided by 9:30 AM on Monday, board member questions to be provided by 9:30 AM on Monday and cabinet will do their best to return the answers by 5:00 PM the same day. We, we are still, staff is still soliciting questions from board members so that they will be better prepared to answer them in the public meeting. However, at my request, we have discontinued the practice of staff responding to the board members outside of the open meeting because that really constitutes a meeting away from the public. There are, you know, there, in other words, let's say that there are a bunch of items on the agenda, the agenda is posted in advance. People, the public are interested in hearing about some of those agenda items. And under, under this protocol that's in here, the board, it, outside of the public's hearing, the board, the board asks questions and get answers. And then, when the public is attending the meeting, that item is just not discussed because it's already been discussed in private. So that has been changed and that would have to be updated.
Okay, the intention of that, the intention of that from staff and, and from me actually, in, in your protocols was so that the majority of your questions, especially if they're small questions or clarifications, the staff is prepared when they come to the so the intention was for the staff to be prepared and not to have the staff be sort of broadsided by questions they weren't prepared to answer.
That's right, and that, that's continuing, but what has been discontinued is staff responding before the board meeting.
Okay, so Mel, with a lot of, and it's up to you how you want your district to do it, but the way most districts are doing it is there's a compilation done of all board member questions by someone. It's usually the superintendent's executive assistant is sort of the keeper of all the questions, so compile, compiles all the questions and all the answers so that all board members come to the meeting with the same level of information. For instance, let's say you decided you wanted to meet with the finance office and ask them questions about a particular expenditure. All board members should come to the meeting prepared with that same information, so that you're not the only one who has the information. And then, of course, those questions should be asked, or many of them should be asked again in public, even if you already have the answers to the questions, so that public can hear your discourse or can hear your discussion about it. So the intention isn't to make it not transparent, it's just to make sure all board members come prepared with the same piece of information and no individual board member has a piece of information that all the board doesn't have. And also to have the staff be prepared for those discussions. Now, when you come to the board meeting, if there are 10 questions on a subject, you might only really want to discuss three or four of them in public because they were simple things or technical things or something that was of a particular interest to just one board member that not everybody felt was, you know, that might have been clear to the rest of you. So really, the intent of that was just to have a lot of communication between board and staff prior to the meeting, so that meetings went more smoothly and everybody was on the same page.
Deb, in that vein, can I just ask you, I think we, we had talked about this as a board and, and kind of gone away from that because there was a concern about the Brown Act and information, but if we can continue to ask our questions and get answers that are given to all of the board members so that we're all prepared, if that's something we can make available to the public, or if we can still ask those questions in public, that's fine. But it was really helpful, in my opinion, to be able to ask those questions ahead of time and get everyone's questions and answered and answers ahead of the meeting.
Right, because sometimes, well, and here's the other thing Tristan, Isabel might have a particular, remember you come, all come looking at this from a different lens, right? You all come from different backgrounds and different professions and you look at each issue with a different lens. So let's say Isabel had a question about technology that you might not even think about, because that isn't your wheelhouse, right? So let's say she had a question about technology and the, the staff answered it and you're like, wow, I wouldn't have even thought of asking that question. I'm so glad that Isabel asked it with her expertise in that area and I can have the answer to it, because it's a really good question that I wouldn't have even thought of asking. So that's sort of the intention of having a compilation of everyone's questions and everyone's answers that's provided to the entire board prior to the meeting, so you can all take a look at where everybody's coming from with regard to a particular issue, a particular set of questions.
Yeah, and on that note, I was, I was gonna say, I had asked around at a CTA event late last year other board members and, and I also asked some city council people and they all submit questions in advance, like you were saying Deb, it's all, it's, it's par for the course with any governing body, to get your questions answered and then let staff know, I'm gonna be asking this in public as well, just for transparency. So I think we kind of, I, I'd like to kind of restore that practice because it's it's kind of, you know, I, I want to get my thing, my, my queries answered before meeting. I want to be well-prepared, because it also forces us, when we ask a question, it may open up another question that we otherwise would not be able to really get staff to answer before meeting, you know, so I think we need to, to kind of go back to the way we were doing things before.
Right.
Can I have Dr. Breggy jump in here? Because my, I, I've been continuing to, to ask questions ahead of time, Dr. Breggy, and I thought that, and I know that sometimes other board members have asked questions and when I get my responses, I'm getting other people's responses, but has that, that has not gone away.
No, it's just, sometimes you'll ask the same questions that somebody else is asking, so, so that's why it may seem like that. But what's been happening recently, based on our last communication, was that if a board member asks questions, you know, we, we answer them as a cabinet and then I've been sending them to just the person that's, that's asked them. And I will say, that's the first time I've ever done that. One of the things that was always my concern, it, it always is a concern, is that, that one board member doesn't have more information than another. And so, you know, as you mentioned, like, not to call out Mrs. Marcus, but Mrs. Marcus has a lot of really good questions. And so, and I do think that sometimes she is able to bring up some things that some other people haven't. And I will say, because I think the most important thing, because I would do that, and then I would, then I would, you know, present them to, to everyone. I didn't say who, who asked me what, but, you know, and I, I would do all the organizing of it. But I would say 80% so normally, I, so all the board members would, would ask questions, I would share one document with everybody that had everybody's questions for that meeting. And, and I would say 80% of the times, even though I've given the answer back out, they will, a board member will ask that same question again, because they do want this publicly answered, but it does give staff the time to, to investigate and research, which has been really helpful.
I'd like to go back to the way that we were doing it before. I think that actually led to a lot of really good questions and discussions. So I'd like to go back to sharing all of the questions and all of the answers ahead of time, instead of just the individual board member who's asked the question.
I think we have that in the protocols, actually, Tristan. So when we get to the protocols, let's write that in a way that everybody feels comfortable with it. I want Mel to make sure, I want to make sure that Mel, because he brought this up, is, is comfortable with it too. It doesn't mean that we don't, we're not gonna have those discussions in public, Mel. It just means that staff can come prepared with the data, the information, because chances are, if you as board members had a question about something, your community might have a question about it too, and I think it's good for staff to come prepared to present or answer the question in a detailed way in public.
Can I, zero in on this a little bit here? One of the things that I, I felt was that in, in going through the agenda, in, in pulling the items to discuss it, I think that's where we could ask questions about these items, because that's usually where I find most of my questions, and I, I think that that has been lost because we go through the agenda so quickly, that portion of the agenda, that pulling items, we don't give anybody a chance to really discuss them. And I think if we have the questions now and everybody's got them, it would give us a chance to talk about some of the issues that there may have been about them and why we wanted to talk about it. So that was what I missed the most, is to have that opportunity.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead here to protocols and see where we talk about it. Here we have agenda questions and requests for information. Let's see what it says and see if everybody's good with it. So that's on, if you want to refer to this, this is on page nine. So I think we want to beef up this protocol probably and add something to a bullet point that says, the superintendent will compile the list of questions and share with all board members, something like that?
Well, we have to, we have, we have to delineate that, you know, we're talking about agenda questions or overall questions, because we ask both of staff.
Well, this is too, this is agenda questions and requests for information protocol, so any questions?
Okay, so any questions, okay. Whether it's on the agenda or not, we should make that clear.
Yeah, and, and I want to tell you guys that some boards go as far as making this an attachment, an addendum to the board packet, the public packet. In the back of the packet are all the questions the board members asked about agenda, items on the agenda and the answers to those questions. Some people, some boards go as far as making that an addendum to the agenda. I'm not suggesting that you do that. And, and also, you know, the superintendent has to use his best judgment. If Rochelle just calls and says, why were pencils five cents? And, and Mr. Breggy says, well, the cost of wood went up a penny, pencils are, went from four to five cents, maybe you're not all interested in that. Maybe he knows that that's just something that would interest her and he doesn't have to include that or something small or trivial in the list of questions. Or if you just, what time is this meeting?
Sometimes the questions will be, I'll ask a question and maybe Tristan will ask the same question. So it's a way of somehow, you know, making sure that there's a, simplify the, you know, the one answer for two people. So I, I always appreciated knowing all the questions and when it stopped, I got more out of what everybody else asked by getting something that I didn't even see, as we mentioned just before, so I look forward to that and it's not been, hasn't been done lately.
Okay, it's really important too, and Dr. Breggy, I think you said it earlier, that you don't identify who asked the question, because it's important that you don't identify who asked the question, because that could be considered a Brown Act violation, because it could be, it could be considered influencing the rest of the board. So it's important that you just say, a board member asked this question, this was the answer. Or you could even say, a few board members asked this question, here was the answer. It's, it's applicable to, or it's okay to do that, it's just not okay to name them.
No, and I, and I agree with that and I have never, ever singled anybody out.
My only concern about this is the part of the agenda, of the board agenda that is the consent calendar, because let's say that I have questions on three, three items in the consent calendar. If I ask the questions in advance and get the answers in advance, I'm not gonna pull, I'm not gonna bother pulling those items for discussion and they are going to be, and if nobody else pulls the items, then they are not gonna be discussed, they're gonna be approved for the, within the entire consent calendar and you can have people coming to the meeting because they're interested in hearing about some of those and then all of a sudden, there's no discussion of them.
No, but you should pull them there. You should pull them, you absolutely should pull them. You should just let staff be aware that, you know, I thank you for answering my questions, so you know I'm gonna be pulling these at the board meeting for further discussion, so come prepared with the data that you just provided me with. You absolutely should pull them, you should.
And, and let me just say that, that whether, like the first, first three years that I, that I've been here, and we've done the questions back and the board gets all the questions, and even just in the last, I don't know, six months or so, where it's just been, the questions are given back to the individual board member, nothing has changed in that board members are still, even if it's in consent, people are pulling it off, because I even had cabinet members at first that were, that were like, I thought we answered that. And, and so, but it was like, they, you know, they realize now that, no, it's, it's a board members, even though we answered the question, a board member realizes that this may be a question that the community needs to hear the answer to. So that's why I haven't noticed any difference about the number of things being pulled off consent, because board members still pull off things that they had questions about.
Good, that's a good, that's a good practice. It should, that's as it should be.
Happens all the time.
So Deb, I was gonna say that on number two there in the, in the section, when, when we say it share the information with the full board is appropriate, perhaps we can actually make that specific and say as appropriate and without violating the Brown Act or something like that, because that's, that's the tricky slope there, so we should draw attention to it. So people who view, view this document know that we're aware of this process and that this cabinet's aware of the process and that this is fact-finding and not risking violating the Brown Act.
Okay, so this, so under number four, where the superintendent shall compile all questions and answers and share all answers with, share all or share both questions and answers, questions.
Let me see here.
And answers with all board members?
Well, it's also under number two, I don't know what's on.
Number two, the superintendent or assigned staff will try to respond to trustee within 24 hours.
And share the information with the full board as appropriate.
Appropriate, right.
So as appropriate would define, I would say is, it means without violating the Brown Act.
Yeah.
Correct?
Correct.
I don't know the fancy way to write that, but that's the gist of it.
Consistent with the constraints of the Brown Act.
Good. Thank you, Tristan.
You're welcome.
Because for us, that really, what that means is that if Dr. Brecky sends out information to the whole board, we can't respond to all.
Right.
Once he, once he sends that information to us, the, the conversation's over for on that.
And I would say the board is really good about that. Like, I mean, I, you can tell that, working with experienced board members because that's, you know, people are not making rookie acts like that.
Okay. All right. Let's go back because we, I, I went up ahead because we were talking about that. So I thought it was best to, to add that in as we were talking about it, having a live discussion about it. So page five was okay. We're going to add the cabinet intentions for positive work environment. Yes?
Sure.
Okay. So page six speaks to agreements and actions to enhance good governance and it starts with norms. So is everybody okay with all the norms and are there any others that we need to add?
I was going to say that there's, on page seven and eight, there's a lot of stuff that's referenced in, in, uh, bylaw 9271 and 9005. Things that are covered there are points under number two, uh, under number six, seven and eight. We have those as part of our bylaws. So my question, Deb, is I don't think this document should be, you can reference a bylaw, but it shouldn't repeat a bylaw. So I, I don't, and this would take some filtering down. I don't know to the extent we want to do that right at the moment. But, um, there's just, there's a lot of cross, a lot of crossover. So I'm, I'm happy to hear my colleagues' thoughts on this, but we get repetitive with our own bylaws, which really go, which really govern us, uh, right off the bat. So.
Well, remember Noah, one of the key reasons for having a, a board governance handbook is it's an easy reference. And you don't always have your bylaws hanging around for easy reference. So the idea of a board governance handbook is just says, yeah, we have bylaws that cover this stuff, but here's what our intent is. So it's like when you go to a lawyer and here's what the law is, but you get different lawyers' opinions about what the intent of the law was or what it is in plain language. So what we're trying to do is take your bylaws and make sure that your governance handbook, of course, we want everything in the governance handbook to be consistent with the bylaws, but to sort of be a, if you will, a condensed or Reader's Digest version of it. Bylaws that are most important to your board and the way that you do business. So that was sort of the intent. And it's also the intent of a governance handbook is when you have new board members, you can give them something that says, this is the way we've agreed to operate. Review this and let us know if there's anything in here that you don't understand or that you don't agree with. Because if you don't, if you do, we need to change it because it needs to be, have consensus.
Okay. So then, then to that effect, and thank you Deb for clearing that up. And maybe where it says BHUSD board norms, maybe we can, underneath, we can put, you know, reference bylaws, this number, this number and this number. So if, if somebody does read this and then they want to dive in more, then they can go find the bylaw that, that it's based on. And I'd be okay with that. Just knowing that, um, uh, this is kind of a filtered version of, of the bylaws for other, for, for people's reference. So you don't have to go digging through gamut online, which is not always easy and I get that.
I'll let you guys.
If, if my colleagues are amenable to that. I just don't want to seem like we're creating a document that's completely repetitive. If it has a purpose, even though it, it references specific bylaws, then we should state that. You know, so it's, that doesn't look like the board is fumbling around and just repeating something that we didn't know already existed.
Okay. It's a good, it'd be a good addition. Maybe, um, your executive assistant could look up what bylaws these are applicable to and add them in.
Well, I know, I definitely know 9271 and 9005 are in this next section here, one through 11. We referenced both of those. So, um, tho, those are the ones I caught so far, but I, I didn't even do that deep of a dive yet on the bylaw part of it.
Which, once again, Noah, just so that.
9271, which Deb referenced earlier, and then 9005 covers some stuff in number six, seven and eight.
And also 9010 and 9310.
Okay.
There's actually a few more. I don't, I mean, I, I agree with Noah. I, I don't want this to become repetitive. I think to the extent that we can cut and paste with language from the bylaws that are already adopted, I think that would be a way to really streamline this. I don't think that the bylaws are written in such complicated language that they need to be translated into lay terms. Um, and there are significant repetitions between the two. So I'd, I'd prefer to, um, use the same language that's in the bylaws that have been adopted to list in the norms, in the BHUSD norms, even if we're going to list, you know, the bylaws, the numbers at the top. I think we can take out the little paren, parentheses where it says, you know, CF 9011, um, the, the references to education code, government code, things like that. But I really think to the extent that we can keep the language identical to the bylaws that have been adopted, that would be helpful.
That's up to you guys. I don't, I didn't know, I don't, not all bylaws are the same number. Like 9200 is usually the same number with all districts, but your bylaws might be numbered differently. So I, I couldn't reference, I don't have the ability to reference them. So if you guys want to take a stab at doing that, I think that's fine. Otherwise, if you just want to reference them or just say, these are consistent, consistent with these bylaws, I think that's fine too. It's up to you.
So, yeah, if I can just, uh, just jump in. So, um, you know, it's kind of like when I was a, a, a high school principal. I mean, we have, you know, there's, there's, obviously there's staff, um, you know, there's, there's board policy for staff. And so, but what this does is kind of like what we did for our staff is that, you know, and even when I was a teacher, we would do this for students as well, is that, you know, even though that, that language is there, you know, you, you know, it's, it, it is sometimes written so formally that this is just, just a, a way to kind of just, you know, summarize it and have it concise. I mean, if, if I'm a principal and I'm meeting with staff about like, you know, how are we going to work together collaboratively? How are we going to treat one another? You know, it's like, we know that that's there, but it's like, you know, how, how are we going to actually put this into, into, into practice? Which is, yes, it has to be consistent, um, but yet it's not usually written in the same language. So that's, I mean, otherwise we'd have a handbook that's just, here are your bylaws.
Here are your bylaws. Yeah, exactly. And you know what? And the, and the governance handbook, again, you have a million bylaws. The governance handbook includes, should include stuff that's specific to your issues or specific to your, the culture that you want to create, you know? So, and that's not written in a bylaw. I mean, when, when we talk about like number three, speak openly, honestly and respectfully. Be, be concerned about your tone of voice, the words that you use, the impact your communication has on other people personally. Things like that speaks to the kind of atmosphere that you want to have and that you want to show to your community and to your children. And that's not written in a bylaw. This is written in a really personal way about, this is how we as a group of people want to treat each other and want to interact with one another. And so there's some subtleties in this.
There's a distinction, I think, to be made between, I think there's a distinction to be made between norms and bylaws.
Yeah.
And, um, I think those are kind of quick reminders. And, uh, it's, it's, it's an opportunity for the board now and in the future to just have a quick reference, I think, of the, um, the specifics, the very, you know, it's a very hands-on approach to, here's what we've agreed to. And without citing a bylaw, because I think there is a place to do that.
Noah, like, I'll give you an example.
Just to chime in on that, I wrote that this is sort of a quick reference for new bed, new board members and it's an easy way to go through it. If they have a question about the bylaw itself, they can always go back to the bylaw because it's referenced there. But I think this is something that's a short, like a shorthand way of a quick study of what was, it could be expected. So, uh, I would look upon this as a document when I came on that was a very quick thing for me to, uh, reference. And I wouldn't have to look at the bylaws and go through a list of bylaws, uh, because it was right here for me. It's like a little Bible for you to study very quickly.
I'll give you an example of how else this was used. You guys are, norms were used. I just sat in on a, um, or helped mediate actually, some negotiations at a district with a, with a cut, pretty contentious union representative. And, uh, we started out by saying, here are our norms. This is how our board and our superintendent and our staff have agreed we like to treat each other. Uh, we're cognizant of our tone of voice. We're cognizant of not attacking each other personally, um, not being harshly argumentative or personal in our comments. We're cognizant of these things. This is what we want to emulate for our kids. This is what we want to emulate for our community. And this is the way we hope, these are the tools we hope to use and the tone we hope to use and the, and the, and the ground rules for negotiating with you. And we'd like you to agree to them. And it really changed the tone of the negotiations process. It really changed the tone of the way that people spoke to each other at that meeting, which I, I'm told, I wasn't at the meeting before that, that it was very contentious at the meeting before. But I think when you tell people, this is how we expect to be treated. This is how we treat each other and this is how we expect you to treat us. I think it has an impact. So, uh, again, a, a governance handbook is more than just a set of rules and regulations and bylaws. It's a way of saying to your community and saying to each other, this is what our expectations are for creating a positive climate at this district and, and creating, um, a climate that we all like to work in and a place that we all want to be. And it's what we're trying to, what, you know, what we hope happens throughout the district and with our parents and with our children. And it's, it's an example we want to show to them. So it's more than just the legality stuff. It's, it's really more about, about the climate you want to create at your district and the kind of sense of community you want to have. Okay. Any other, um, comments about any of the other norms? And again, if you guys want to reference bylaws, I think that's fine, but I would, I would disagree, Kristen, or Tristan, with, with having the bylaw actually become the norm. Maybe. I think referencing that is a, is a.
I, I just want to, that we're talking about the inclusion of all of these numbers here. Are we all, in other words, do we, in other words, agree to them? We have to make sure that we're putting them in there. And so are we going to be in agreement with all of these according to the bylaws? Uh, I personally, um, reference one that I, I find that I have the most trouble with and that's number five. And, um, I'd like to talk about that one, if we could talk about that one.
Sure. Let's talk about it. Take collective responsibility. Board members shall stand behind the decisions of the majority vote. That's a really important one.
And I, I've, I've had some feelings about that one when it has not occurred. And, uh, and so I just want to point that out, that we're about to put this into a, uh, a, um, document that we're going to abide by. And so I want to make sure that, that we all see these things because that's one that I've had a lot of trouble, I've had a trouble dealing with.
So you're not always going to agree. Um, the reason this is in here is because you're not always going to agree with your fellow board members, right? So sometimes it might be a three, two vote. Three of you might want one thing and two of you might have the other. And so I think we go into it a little further in the protocol when it says explaining no votes or standing behind the vote of the board. But what the, what the intent of this, uh, this phrase or this sentence means is that you should not be an impediment. You don't have to agree with the vote of the board, but you shouldn't speak out openly against it. So at the very least, if you, if you can stand behind it, if you can say, you know, if a reporter stops you at the door and says, how do you feel about that? You just got outvoted. You could say something like, I, I, you know, you heard what I had to say during board deliberation, uh, but out of respect for my fellow board members and the deliberation that took place, I stand behind the majority vote. Or if you can't say that in good conscience because you don't, and sometimes things will happen where you don't agree with the majority vote, you should at least not be an impediment to it. You know, your comment should be, you heard what I had to say during board deliberation. During board deliberation is the time for you guys to disagree. It's a time for you to make your, you know, make your voice known, make your argument for what you're voting on. But once the vote is taken, it's really, really important, if you don't agree with the vote and you can't stand behind it, to be silent and not be an impediment to that vote being moved forward. You know, you should not be writing an op ed in the newspaper about my fellow board members are idiots and I can't believe they voted on this. You know, not that any of you would do that. But, um, you should not be an impediment to the majority vote and the actions from the majority vote moving forward. And speaking out against it is becoming an impediment. The time to speak out against it is during board deliberation.
Thank you.
Does that make sense to everybody?
I just want to be clear, because this, I think this has been a big point of contention for, for several years in the past, as it is currently. So on something, let's say like the district calendar, where there were a lot of different viewpoints, where we have not only had a majority vote at the time we adopted it because we had to, because administrative reasons, but now also have majority vote. So when the public is asking us questions about, let's say, why do we have a week off at Thanksgiving? I really don't agree with that. What you're saying is that by agreeing to what the verbiage in this handbook is, is that it is incumbent upon the board members to say, I said my piece during deliberations and to not go into explaining why a week off at Thanksgiving is a bad thing.
After the board's taken the vote? Are you talking about after the board's taken the vote? Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, so.
That would be a best practice.
Essentially, since that happened months ago, the assumption based on being consistent with the words that are presented on this page right now means that every one of the five of us needs to stand by the majority vote and say that we said our piece when we had board discussion.
Yes.
That's.
That's the short answer. Um, a little longer answer for you would be, if a, a person in the, in the community asked a question about it, you could explain what the process and you could explain and reiterate, if you wanted to, the board deliberation. We talked about this. Some board members brought, I wouldn't name names. Some board members brought up this. I brought up this. In the end, the board voted for it and I stand behind that vote. Or in the end, the board voted for that and, uh, it will be carried out because the majority rules. You know, no individual board member has authority. So the, the majority rules. At the ve, the very most that I would ever say in disagreement to is, for the record, I voted no. If you want to say that, that's perfectly fine. You, or refer to, refer to the board meeting minutes and you can see what I said during board deliberation. Something to that effect. So that you could defend your position because obviously, you know, you, you are, you have to answer to your community. And if your constituents wanted you to fight for something, you want to tell them that, yes, you did. You, you did your best to fight for something that they wanted, but now the majority speaks and the majority voted against it. And, um.
Well, I think it's also important, I mean, I'm not, I'm not going to go into the details of the calendar, but I think there was confusion from the community because they perceived that four members, four board members did not like the calendar that was adopted. And so we had a situation where we had to adopt the calendar because it benefited students. It was the, it was the greater good. And it was just a situation, um, you know, having to do with staff. There was, it, it wasn't handled the way the board would have have handled it or the way it had been handled in the past. So I think that's why there was a lot of, you know, conversation or confusion from community members as to, well, what, what happened? I mean, I thought you guys didn't like this calendar and then we winded up with the calendar that four board members didn't like. So this one was a little different.
Yeah.
But I.
But even if you didn't like it, if you voted for it, you've got to stand behind what you voted for. I mean, that's.
That's right. That's right. And I also, I'd like to point out also that our board bylaw 9010 that we, that was adopted in, uh, March 2009 specifically says, the board believes that effective board members have a responsibility to express themselves, whether in agreement or disagreement with the board majority in ways that promote the board's ability to govern the district. So I, for, in terms of number five, going back to number five, because that's what we're talking about. I think that the language needs to be changed a bit since it doesn't exactly agree with our board bylaw, not in spirit or in letter. Um, and take collective responsibility, that's also something that I think is a little bit questionable because when we talk about votes that were taken even by previous boards, that some, some current board members were on. Taking responsibility for votes that have happened in the past is not something that we currently do. In fact, there are more conversations that we have where the, where the answer is, well, I didn't, I didn't vote for that. Or I was, I was outvoted on that. So if, if, let's really be clear when we're talking about taking responsibility means you own what the board did, even if you were in the minority. That's what this says. So all of the decisions of the past, if that's the requirement of this number five, taking responsibility of the whole, of the majority vote, I think that's a little bit questionable. Because if we're going to say, well, no, I actually didn't vote for that, then that's not really taking responsibility for the majority vote.
Well, I, I think it's hard, Tristan, to ask board members to take responsibility for a vote that happened in the past that they may have been opposed to. I mean, they can't really, if, if they fought as hard as they could during board deliberation. I mean, they can't really, if, if they fought as hard as they could during board deliberation and they were outvoted, they can't really take responsibility for it. I mean, they could admit that, you know, it, it is what it is and we have to all move forward from here. But um, but The standing board. I'm talking about, I, we, we can't, this can't address things that happened in the past.
I don't know why we would set a different precedent for this board than we had for the last board.
Because this is your governance handbook. It's not theirs. It's yours. It's how you agree to work as a board.
Board members to a different account. That when you were in the minority, you have the right to say, I don't agree or I'm in the minority. But now that you're in the majority, the minority doesn't have an opportunity to say, I don't agree. That wasn't my
No, you still have it. You absolutely still have the opportunity to say, I don't agree and I, I don't agree with this. You, the opportunity that you have is during, at the board meeting in the public during board deliberation. That's the opportunity that every board member has for disagreeing or making their case or making a case for their community, their constituents' concerns is in an open meeting during board deliberation. What's not fair is to put something in the newspaper or put something on social media or, or anything, you know, that's sort of behind the door. That's not, that's not being done with everyone present, with everyone there uh, uh, available to hear or respond to it. Because when you post something or when you write something in the newspaper or when you put something out publicly, the, the rest of your board isn't there to be able to respond to it or even give a counterpoint unless they want to get into a public discussion. You know, uh, in the media, which is the last thing you ever want to do in order to show, have your community have, have confidence in the work that you're doing. So yes, disagree, disagree passionately, disagree vehemently. Do it in an open session at the board meeting during board deliberation. But once the vote is taken, what's the point of disagreeing with it? You have, you have no power to change it. Once the vote is taken, it's law.
If it's a discussion and the vote has not yet been taken, if it's an ongoing discuss- discussion as was the district's calendar, then until it's a settled issue.
Yeah, then you can say whatever you want to say until the vote is taken. Say whatever you want to say until the vote is taken.
Um, Deb, Deb, to your, to your point, when a vote is taken, it becomes law. We had an issue several years ago when the uh, I think I was the only one here when this happened, when they closed, prematurely closed the auditorium at the high school and Hawthorne. For reasons that it was a three-two vote, it was a mess. Uh, we had tried to bring back the vote the following board meeting to overturn it. Couldn't get that done, but we used the uh, form of an open session deliberation and Robert Tools of Order to manage the issue. Were we successful? No, the auditoriums were closed. But uh, we wanted to take a stand publicly to make sure that the record reflected how vehemently opposed we were. And we did the best we could and that's the end of it. And since then, since those, the, the, those days oh, so many years ago, uh, when people say things, you know, I will always use the term the board majority. And I think that's the way for, for board members who did not agree with something that the board majority did at the time, to separate themselves. Instead of saying the board decided to do something, which is usually a unanimous decision, which by the way, is about ninety-five percent of our votes are unanimous, um, to say the board majority uh, uh, acted this way, not disparaging it, just to use that vernacular so people understand that it wasn't a unanimous vote.
Right. Fine. That's absolutely fine, Noah. And like I said, uh, to Tristan, it's even okay. I, I discourage it. But if you feel like you need to do it, it's even okay to say, look, I didn't vote for it, but the majority of the vote, board did, and it's what's going to happen. There's nothing we can do about it at this point. So there's no reason to debate it.
It's, it's, one of the things, just similar fashion that, that when I work with cabinet, it's, it works the same way. So, you know, we, we provide recommendations and we know that, you know, there's three things that can happen. The board can agree with us. The, the board could revise what we've recommended or they could say no. And so um, it's the same kind of um, uh, you know, philosoph- philosophy or, you know, uh, the same line of thinking that it's, um, you know, oftentimes we could be disappointed, but it's, this is, this was the decision. And um, you know, and, and we may not fully understand why, but it, we're going to, we go with it and then it's done. And then we, then we move on.
Yeah. And you know what? A- as a board member, you know, I was a board member for, for close to thirteen years. You win some and you lose some. And I, I, I was the only woman on a board for almost thirteen years and, and the only person under fifty on the board for almost thirteen years. So believe me, a lot of votes did not go my way. And a lot of times I didn't feel like my voice was being heard. But at times, when I really needed to get something done because I supported and never disparaged my fellow board members or never, you know, second guessed them. Once the decision was made, I went along with it. Or like I said, if I couldn't, if I couldn't agree with it, I just at least wouldn't be an impediment to it. And when it came time to put my things forward, I think they, they appreciated the fact that I could have because I was more active in the community than my fellow board members. I was the president of Seroptimist. I was Alliance Club member. I was, you know, at a bunch of service clubs. I certainly could have uh, thrown them under the bus for making some of the decisions that they made. You know, that, which some turned out not so good, but I never did that. I never did that because I knew the time would come when I needed to. First of all, because I wanted the community to have confidence in the work that we were doing as a group. And I think as a group, we did great things in those thirteen years. You know, all the people that sat on the board, some of them I liked, some of them I didn't. That's the truth. Some of them I had great relationships with, others I didn't. But I think in, in the whole, looking back, we did some really great things that are still happening twenty years later in the district. And sometimes when I brought things forward, I did, most of the time when I brought something forward, I did have their support because I supported them. Or at least when I couldn't support them, I at least didn't um, stand in the way of those things happening. And we stood together as a group. And I think that was one of our greatest strengths. You know, before I got on the board, there had been two recalls in five years. And uh, we had a lot of um, a lot of community confidence issues to overcome. And so one of my greatest or one of my biggest goals, when I sat on that board is I want to make the community feel confident in the work that we're doing and good, better and different. Um, I'm going to be part of this team and, and show that I'm a, a team player and that we're collectively, the decisions that we make are all child-based. They're, they're children's needs over adult needs. And so um, anyway, that's my take on it.
Okay, so I think we should move on, right? Um, where were we? We were
We were on, we were on number fi- uh, number three, number four, maintain confidentiality. Let's see, where were we? Take collective responsibility. We're on number five. So does anybody have any of the other, any other comments about the norms? Don't take disagreements personally. That one's hard. Sometimes, don't you think? Because, you know, we're people. We have feelings. And so I think it's really hard when someone doesn't agree with us to not take it personally. But remember, it's the, it's business. It's the business of the board and you have to just, if you're not getting your way today or you're not happy with what's happening today, you just have to move on. You have important things you're doing, especially now, every day of the week. So move on from it and get on to the next, get on to the next issue. Okay, any other questions or any other additions to the norms? Okay, let's move on to protocols then. These are going to be a little bit tougher ones. And again, these were just suggested based on the meeting that we had. Um, the first one, I think we already worked on, which was questions and requests for information. So the only thing that we've changed on that, that is uh, item number two. We're going to be appropriate. He's going to share the information with the full board appropriate with the Brown Act. And uh, we added the superintendent shall compile all questions and answers and share both questions and answered with all, answers with all board members. Um, and then I put some possible language for if something comes up during the board meeting. So say something just pops into your head and you haven't asked this question and maybe it's a big, a big question or an important question before the meeting took place. You might want to say something to staff so that staff doesn't feel like you're trying to give, you know, get them caught, catch them off guard. I want to apologize. I didn't give you an advance notice, but this just came up or I just thought about this. Um, could you get me the answer to this question? I was wondering, do you have the answer to this question? So framing your questions to staff so that they don't feel um, like, like they're being caught off guard. Does that make sense? Okay. The next protocol is board member information. And so this just reiterates, this reiterates the one above. It's the goal of all board members to come to the meeting with the same critical information. Uh, and this is why an individual board member should only meet with staff or committee when directed by the superintendent so that he can keep track of the information that you as an individual are getting and make sure that it's shared with the rest of the board. Is that one okay?
Uh, I have one uh, edit on, at the bottom of that sentence where it says questioned, asked and answered. It should be questions with an S.
Let me find it. And that's why it's a draft.
It's actually the top of that next page. Yeah. Um, and I do have one other um, switch that I would uh, prefer to see in that language. Instead of directed by the superintendent, I would prefer authorized. The way that um, the way that we've had it set up is that if one of us has questions that's for a specific department head, we, we either copy Dr. Bregge on an email with the question or we ask Dr. Bregge if we can have uh, uh, a follow-on meeting with that department head. Um, so that he's in the loop. And so it's saying that when directed doesn't mean that originates with the board member.
Okay.
So I just want to make sure that there's still an opportunity for board members to ask for that type of information or meeting directly with the department head so long as the superintendent is in the loop.
Okay, got it. Um, action items as additions to the agenda. So this was, this was um, predicated on a, a comment that people made about things being added last minute or something. I don't, I'm not totally recalling the conversation. Is there a reason why we added this in?
I, I, I brought that one up. I believe I had a couple occasions where I was not prepared, uh, and I was some, in, in the early stages of the board meetings that I was attending, items were brought up and I felt very uncomfortable. There were a couple of situations where I didn't have any information ahead of time. And I was not happy to go discuss it and I didn't, I felt like whether I did it or something. And I was, it was an embarrassing situation. I wasn't prepared to discuss it.
So whenever, whenever possible, we don't want things added to the agenda at the last minute that uh, would cause great deal of discussion or that hadn't already been a discussion item.
Yeah, I did bring it up in the, in, at board meetings. I did discuss it as I recall.
Okay. So this is just saying, we don't want to be surprised with being asked to take action on items that we hadn't already had agendas for discussion at some point in time.
Right.
Speak to that. So um, you know, um, and I, and I think that we do a pretty good job of that, but um, you know, there are some times when, um, and I know what Mrs. Marcus is referring to. Um, there were a couple of times where things were brought. Um, yeah, you know, at the last minute that, 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 you know, it wasn't fair to ask for the board to, to vote on something when they haven't reviewed it. And so um, I hope that the board has seen some improvement. We've made some internal um, changes, uh, some kind of checks and balances. So hopefully there's been a change, but I do recognize, I do remember some of those issues that happened before with some of our staff that were new. And so um, it, it, there's been an improvement. Um, you know, there, there is stuff that still happens. Like just today, I was alerted to something that um, you know, that the board should have been alerted to, um, you know, over a week ago. Um, you know, but at least, you know, I was able to get it to the board today, but I just found out about it myself. Um, so uh, but we've made improvements in that area. So I just want to recognize uh, Mrs. Marcus, because I do remember uh, there, there, those instances.
I, I don't think there has been one in the last three, four, five months where I have had that situation.
But it's a fair, that was a fair, that I remember that time. It was a very fair uh, expectation of us.
So Deb, I think this, this one has to be clarified. Um, I think there's two different things you're saying here. One is uh, uh, making sure that, that all action items or agenda items are added in a timely fashion so that board members can be adequately prepared. I think that's what we're trying to say. The second thing is board members may always exercise their right to ask for an item to be tabled if they do not feel adequately prepared. And I think those are two completely separate items. They should be broken up under this. And maybe um, it's not really additions to the agenda. It's just how, uh, it's, it's the um, kind of the, the protocol, like you're saying, between the board and staff in reference to items, in reference to action items. That's, that's kind of what it should be titled, I think. I think it's
So most boards are adopting, and, and I think I talked to you guys about this. Most boards I have adopted or are adopting this sort of one, two, three um, rule when it comes to action items. So that an item is first agendized as a discussion item um, by the superintendent. Let's just say you wanted to paint all the schools green tomorrow. Okay? The first thing the superintendent would do and say, I, I would like to add to the agenda uh, a discussion item for next month on painting the schools green. Uh, does the board want to discuss that? And if the board wants to discuss that, it's added to the following agenda. If the board says, no way, we don't want to ha- have that agendized because we're not going to paint the schools green. So just forget about it. Don't even bother agendizing it. It doesn't get agendized. So it's, it's agenda, uh, agendized for discussion, you know, to move forward on. If the board says, yeah, let's hear more about that, on the following agenda would be information about what the cost is going to be to paint the schools green, why you want to do it, what color green is it going to be. It's the opportunity for you to do the investigation part and ask all your questions about painting the schools green. And then only by the third time it's agendized, does it become an action item. So it's sort of the one, two, three rule with regard to adding things to the agenda for big items, for big things. Like are we going to pass a bond? Are we going to put the bond on, on the, uh, on the uh, ballot? Are we going to uh, you know, add this to the curriculum? Are we going to adopt these textbooks? So for big things, um, it's usually done with, with a one, two, three rule that it's agendized three times. First to see if the board wants to talk about it, second to discuss it, and third to have it be an action item. So that you have plenty of time for the community to be noticed that this is going to be something that's coming up. For the board members to think about all the questions that they may have and get them addressed. And then finally, when it becomes an action item, most of your concerns or the vast majority of your concerns and discussions are already taking place and it's already been addressed and you can move on it pretty quickly.
Yeah, I think, I think we do, we do that on big items, Michael. You can agree. Times that where, where staff has and the board has, I'm sorry, the board has tabled stuff to, to actually force it from discussion to information to vote. So uh, we don't have it necessarily uh, written down officially anywhere, but we do practice that.
Okay, great.
I would agree with that, Noah, a hundred percent.
Yeah. And realize that sometimes things are going to come up. Um, like Dr. Bregge was just, just talking about a board meeting I just observed, something came up where they had the opportunity to get a grant and the board needed to approve acceptance of the grant and it was timely. And so it hadn't been agendized before, but if they wanted the money, they had to approve it. So sometimes things are going to come up that, you know, you just can't have a lot of notice about and that you don't have a lot of time for discussion, but they usually are things that are going to be of benefit to the district. Like that. Okay, so we're okay with that as it is? Action items is, as additions to the agenda?
I know, I'd like to actually break that up into the two different issues about the
Time limit. Board members may exercise
Oh no, I just think it should be separated. It's not, it's, it's a different idea.
Just like a separate
Yeah, just two different, two different things, two different thoughts there.
Okay, got it. Staff, board communications. This one basically speaks to the fact that if you're going to hear about it in the community, you want to hear about it from staff first. You don't want to be blindsided by someone telling you at the grocery store, you hearing on social media or you hearing it on the news, something that's happening in your district or happened in your district that you hadn't already been aware of from the superintendent or staff. And, and that's kind of a two-way street too. If you hear something on the street that happened in a school that you think the superintendent should be aware of, that maybe he isn't, he isn't aware of, um, it's incumbent upon board members to let the superintendent know also what they're hearing. So that's the intent of that protocol. We okay with that one? Hello?
I'm fine with it.
Okay. I can't see you guys because I've got the screen up, so I don't know who's there and who's not there. Okay. Attention to protocols. This is my favorite protocol. Attention to protocols. Um, the reason we have protocols and why, how we use them. So we have them to hold each other accountable. Okay? That's why we have them. They are your own rules of how you want to engage with one another. They're not Dr. Bregge's rules to enforce. They're your rules to enforce. So for instance, let's just say one of you breaks a protocol. Uh, one of you does something, I don't know what you do, but you do, you break a protocol. You bring up something at the board meeting time and time and time again that you haven't given staff a heads up on. And you're, you're doing a lot of gotchas at the board meeting. Let's just say that's happening. It's incumbent upon you all to call each other on that behavior. So it's incumbent, usually it, it goes something like this. So it's incumbent, usually it goes something like this. Everybody's upset with Noah because he keeps doing gotchas at the board meeting and asking staff questions that he hadn't asked beforehand, and making board meetings go really long because he's got a whole bunch of questions. It would be incumbent on the board president to say to Noah, "Noah, that goes beyond our protocols. That's outside of our protocols. Our protocols say that if you have these kinds of questions, you're supposed to have them answered at the board meeting." So she tells Noah that, and Noah stops doing it for a little while, and then Noah starts doing it again. And every board meeting, Noah is asking all these questions, again, outside of the protocols. So the second time Noah does it, maybe Isabel wants to get somebody to come along with her to remind Noah. Maybe she wants to get Mel to come along with her to remind Noah that this is outside of our protocols. So again, it's your tool to use to have each other in check. The last person, he may call your attention to the protocols, Dr. Bregge, but he's not the enforcement mechanism. The enforcement mechanism is really you guys enforcing these with one another and not being afraid to remind each other that you've all agreed that this is how you're going to operate. So that's why I like having attention to protocols and what we do with them once they're adopted, how we use them as a living tool.
And Pam. Pam keeps us all in check.
Okay, yes. And I could tell you that executive assistants often remind board members, too, that it's point of order, this is outside of our protocols, that we're not allowed to talk about this right now, or this is something we agreed not to do. Anybody have any additions to attention to protocols?
What about if it's like outside the meeting?
Doesn't matter where it is. These protocols are about board behaviors. So wherever it's happening, wherever something uncomfortable is happening...
Because I ask because it's number one says, you know, "in the conduct of the meeting."
Well, that speaks to "in the conduct of the meeting," but at any point in time. I mean, let's say I'm a board member and I'm on your board and I'm writing, you know, nasty things in the newspaper about the rest of the board. I would hope the board president and another board member would sit me down and say, "That's not how we do business here, Deb. We agree to support each other, and what you're doing is damaging the reputation of the board, and you need to stop it."
What if there are no other board members around? What if these are individual conversations that senior staff is having with board members?
That senior staff is having with board members?
Like the superintendent or assistant superintendent.
Well, it's not really their job to do that. I, you know, it's hard to, and I have this happen all the time, where board members will, you know, the superintendent will call me and say, "Okay, I've got this issue on my board, and my board president keeps calling me and telling me to fix it." Like, I can't tell another board member not to do this. They're my boss. So I can't, you know, I can't tell Joe on the board to stop writing things in the newspaper because he's one of my bosses. You know, the president of our board has to tell Joe to stop writing things in the newspaper and why. Or if he doesn't feel comfortable doing that, he needs to say, "Who else on the board will Joe listen to that he can talk to?" And, you know, this comes from personal experience, you guys. I had a woman elected to my board in my third term who was doing exactly that, writing op-eds in the newspaper and saying about all the things she disagreed with that we had voted on, or the things that we were doing, or how we were spending our money, and how it was inequitable, and things like that. And so as board president, she hated me. She really, we did not get along. I mean, she, we just had clashing personalities. And there are very few people who I have that issue with. But this person, at this point in time, we just did not get along. And so I went to David, who was another member of my board, who she seemed to go to a lot for advice, and said, "David, I'm asking you as a personal favor. Would you talk to her about what she's doing? Because I think if it comes from me, she'll take it personally, and it'll seem like the president is reprimanding her. But if it just comes from a fellow board member, maybe you can explain to her why this isn't a good idea." And it helped, you know. But even as board president, she and I couldn't have that discussion just because we had a personal conflict. But when David talked to her, you know, things worked under my direction.
But that also creates a situation where the board president is the only one that can advise the trustees. What about in the other direction?
Yeah, no, it should be. Exactly right. If the board president, and you know what? She did that to me, too. I was board president at the time. She didn't like some of the things I was doing, and she asked David to talk to me about them also. So it's a two-way street. It's definitely a two-way street.
Deb, I, along those lines, and definitely number one here on attention to protocols should say to guide the board in their conduct in and outside of meetings. Because otherwise, it's not, otherwise all of this relates to meetings under this.
Is everybody okay with that? And I don't want to, you know what? I'd like to add to this, just saying what Tristan just mentioned. We should say the board president or any board member.
Okay. I'm good with that.
Okay, because a lot of times you might catch something, Mel might catch something that's beyond your protocols that he'd like to bring up that he's uncomfortable with. So really, it's any board member.
I was hoping that that would come up, that we would, because inside and outside of the board, I think we have a responsibility. It's a responsibility to observe this kind of a protocol. Whether it's a protocol that would be observed in the meeting, why should it be different than it's outside of the meeting? So I personally feel that the addition of those words, Noah, makes good addition. Thank you.
Thank you. Just check your spelling on that, Deb, because I don't think you... It says board president or may board member, so...
Or any, any board member. Okay. Can we move on to deliberation at board meetings?
Yes.
Okay, good. Deliberation at board meetings. So this sort of delineates how deliberation happens. If this is not how you do deliberation, let me know and let's change it. The item is introduced, the president calls for motion and a second. If no motion or second, the motion dies. If the motion carries and goes forward, you allow for public comment. And then trustees use this opportunity to deliberate, to reflect on the item in light of impact on students, values, mission goals, priorities, constituent perspectives and interests, legal requirements and costs. Is that how your deliberation happens, or is it just...
I think Mel wants to say something.
Okay, go ahead, Mel.
The way that we function and have in this district forever is that public comment on agenda items is heard at the beginning of the meeting. And we do not permit public comment on each item as the items come up during the course of the meeting.
That's your choice.
That's the way we function.
Okay, then I will take out "allow for public comment." Although legally, Mel, you might check with your lawyers. Legally, I believe, the public, if it's an agenda, an item agendized for action, for board action, the public can comment before the board takes action on that item if they were not present or did not speak to it at the beginning of the meeting. I think they have the legal right to do so. But you could check. But I'll take it out for now. But I would check with legal because the way, I think, and I'm pretty sure about that.
I think when you take it out, I think you have to add that public comment is encouraged at the beginning of the meeting on any items on the agenda. I think we do need that in there because we do allow for public comment.
It's in our bylaws, too.
Okay. And yes, you all have to allow for public comment, but usually, well, I'll just tell you how other boards do it. At the beginning of the meeting, people are allowed to speak to any agendized or non-agendized item. They could speak to an agendized item or non-agendized items. And then if they want to speak again, they are usually given the opportunity. And again, I don't know, you could check with your lawyers. I don't know if this is just common practice, or if this is based in law. They are usually given the opportunity right before board deliberation, as soon as the item is introduced during, right before action. Because let's just say your meetings go till midnight or 1 o'clock in the morning, or whatever, however late they go. People would always be there at the very beginning of the meeting to make the comment they want to speak to it as you're deliberating and hear your deliberation, so they don't have to sit there for four hours until their item comes up. So I think there might have been law fairly recently, within the last five years, that changed your ability to limit it to right before, only before the meeting. But check. Again, I could be wrong.
I'll check with our attorneys, for sure. We just have a lot of action, so I couldn't even imagine putting that into practice. But I will double-check because I'm not aware of that change. I am aware of a period of time of asking, you know, non-agenda items and then, you know, actual agenda items. So, but we'll double-check with the attorney and I'll get back to it.
Yeah, double-check and just make sure you don't have to open it for, or you don't have to allow for public comment before you take action on an item. That you could require the public to only comment at the beginning of the meeting.
I've been attending health and safety meetings, and I've noticed that that practice is employed in the health and safety meetings. They can talk about anything to open the meeting, but they can, if they want to make a comment during the meeting on an item that's going to be discussed at that time, they can do it at the health and safety meetings that I've been going.
Yeah, so you may want to check. Okay, anything else on deliberation?
Where's the word for discussion?
Well, that's deliberation. It says trustees use this opportunity to deliberate. I could put deliberate or discuss.
Well, I'm talking about for the Roberts Rules of Orders. It is deliberation, but you have the discussion of a motion usually comes after the second. You, I don't know whether that should probably be stated in there so that people know. I mean, it's just not there. I mean deliberation, you're talking about the total deliberation. I'm talking about the discussion item itself, the discussion.
Yeah, Rochelle, right before that, number 2B, says if the motion carries, go forward. So it kind of directs us to the deliberation part.
Well, then the discussion begins. Go forward doesn't mean something to me. I'd like to change that to something more specific. Go forward from where?
To say, go forward to deliberation and discussion.
Discussion. I mean, I just, there's no word in there for discussion anymore.
Put it in there twice now. Go forward to discussion, and then I say under number three, trustees use this opportunity to deliberate.
Then you don't need to have the word go forward or discussion. Just that the motion, when the motion carries, trustees use the opportunity to deliberate and discuss the items. I think that if the motion carries, when the motion carries, trustees will use the opportunity to deliberate and discuss the items. I don't think you need to have go forward to the discussion at that point. I think that's what's redundant.
Okay.
And I think it's when the motion, or if, or when, yeah.
How's that look, guys?
It's easier than... No, it's fine.
Okay. All right, anything else on deliberation? The only thing that we haven't discussed is, do you guys give the board president permission to bring the deliberation to a close if she feels like you're being repetitive or feels like we're, there are no new ideas and we're just going on and on and on? Possible language, unless we have any new ideas, so call for the question.
We do that practice, anyway.
Okay, cool. Okay, this is the one that is going to solicit some discussion, I would guess. Protocol on electronic communications and social media. Why don't you guys read it? And let me know what notes you've made on it.
Okay. So I can start, at least item one, I'll start with. The, when we get sent emails, I think if the email is sent to the entire board and it addresses the board, like, "Dear board," and not a specific board member, then I think the board president or superintendent should respond on behalf of the board. I think if letters are sent to an individual board member, even though they're CC'd to other members, but it's specifically, it's talking to this board member, that board member should be, should respond, because it's addressed to that board member.
In what way should they respond, Noah, in your opinion?
Politely. I mean, what adjective would they...
Well, the usual protocol is, so this does say, if we are all sent an email, if we are all sent an email. So that means if all board members are sent an email, we'll acknowledge receipt. Like, it's okay to respond. "Thank you for your email. You will be hearing from our superintendent or our board president with a response."
No, I'm not referring to that. I agree with you that it should, if it says, "Dear Board of Education", then the president of the board should respond. And if not, the president, the president can give it to the superintendent to respond. But if it's, if somebody says to, "Dear Mel," and writes to Mel specifically, but CCs the entire board, which a lot of people do, just so we all see it, I think Mel should be the one to respond.
And how should he respond?
Directly to, directly to that person. Mel does not have to CC because you don't want to risk dragging in the whole board into a potential BRAN Act violation. So the individual board member can respond individually to that person. And we can assume, and if we have that protocol in place, then we can assume as a board that, okay, you know, this was sent to Rochelle. Rochelle's going to respond. This was sent to me. I'm going to respond.
Well, that's not a best practice, and I'll tell you why, Deb. Because one board member cannot speak for the board. One board member, unless they're designated spokesperson.
They're not speaking for the board. They're being asked, they're being obviously reached out personally.
Yep.
So, "Dear Noah, I'm really unhappy with the way that you've implemented distance learning. I'd like you to respond to why you've implemented it the way that you have, and tell me why it's not better." It's not appropriate for you to respond.
But that's a board question.
Right, but they're, but they're writing to you directly.
I'll give you an example, Deb. What if someone says an email and says, "Dear Noah, I think that you were disrespectful and rude when talking about the subject of X, Y, and Z in the last board meeting, which was board member X's agenda item. In the future, you should watch the way that you speak to X board member."
So that's a good example. So if it's personal, if it's about your personal behavior, your personal opinion, your personal thoughts, then it's appropriate for you to respond as an individual. If it's about you. If it's about board action, if it's about something that the board has decided to do or something that staff is implementing, it's really important that the official spokesperson of the board, whether that be the superintendent, your director of communications, or the board president, should respond for the board.
So I agree with that. Yes, and I think it should reflect that, then. And the protocol should reflect that. I agree with that.
Okay.
May I chime in, please?
Sure, please.
There is, there is, there does come about frequently this situation. I get a letter, and I don't know whether any of the other board members do, I get an email frequently from somebody who calls himself JJ. Does that strike a chord, or no?
JJ Gluckman is the intern. He's the intern that Dr. Bregge has got, a student.
I get these letters frequently, and the way they are framed is this, is this. He makes reference to an agenda item that was on last week's agenda or last night's agenda. And he says, maybe it was a discussion item or something like that. And he gives me his opinion, and then he says, "What is your viewpoint on this issue?" And I have answered him. He's not writing to the rest of the board. He's asking me for my viewpoint on something, and I tell him what my viewpoint is.
That's perfectly appropriate, Mel, because he's asking you specifically. What, how do you, I elected you, Mel. You were my board member. I voted for you. How do you personally, what's your stand on this issue? It's perfectly appropriate for you to respond and say, "I am not speaking for the rest of the board. This is my personal response. This is how I personally feel." That's absolutely appropriate. What I'm talking about is when people write and CC the whole board on things that you voted on, things that you're implementing, things that you're taking action on that require, or have required, a vote of the board, action from the board, or action from your staff. That's when I don't want you to individually respond. If they're asking for your individual opinion, you have every right, and it's within your constitutional rights, obviously, to make your opinions known. it's within your constitutional rights, obviously, to make your opinions known, to express your opinions, to let people know what your personal opinions are, as long as they do not have the misunderstanding, and you make it very clear that this is your personal opinion, not the opinion or the face of the board, the opinion of the board.
But you don't know whether he hasn't really said that, because he can be CC and change the dear Mrs. Marcus or dear Mr. Spitz, and you don't know. So, you know, when you're responding, you're responding with your own opinion anyway. And I've been, I have been in receipt of the same emails from JJ Gluck, as I'm sure Ms. Walker has, and Tristan and Schuman, and maybe also Mal Mel has been, and I'm sure everybody has now been. I mean, I'm not, he's not, and I many times will say, that's a very interesting point of view, you know, try to deflect it a little bit or explain a little bit of why it is what it is. But for the most part, the only thing that I would like to say is that, right now, in the first one, if you are, allow the board president or the superintendent to respond on behalf of the board. Generally speaking, when I get one of those mails that, I will say, yes, I appreciate your sending it and your opinion and so on, but I'm going to let the board president or the superintendent respond. Generally speaking, I pass it on to the superintendent. I don't make an attempt to make any comment on it at all. I don't feel that I comfortable speaking for the whole board, so I just pass it right along.
Or very often, I would say, I haven't formed a complete opinion yet, because I like my opinions to be formed after board deliberation. I want to hear what my fellow board members have to say. So often, if someone would ask me about, how are you, you know, this is on the agenda, how are you going to vote, or what's your opinion on this? I would often say, and this is the truth, I choose not to have an opinion on that at this time, until I hear what my fellow board members or what people of our, in our community who might attend the board meeting have to say. I don't go into board meetings with my mind made up. I go into my board meetings with my mind open and willing to see the viewpoints of our community and my fellow board members prior to making a decision. That's often how I would respond to things like that, because you kind of can dig yourself in a little hole if you, you know, respond and say, this is how I'm going to vote, or this is how I feel about it. And then you get into the board meeting and you're presented with additional information from staff, or you're presented with additional viewpoints from your fellow board members, or people in the audience say things that you haven't thought about, and you change your mind. And then that person could accuse you of wavering or lying or whatever. So, you know, I like to, again, say, if you're interested in hearing how I feel about this, come to the board meeting, because you'll hear what I have to say then. But I don't form my opinions until I, until I listen to everyone else's opinions.
Sometimes these opinions are posted publicly, though. I've seen where some of the opinions have been posted publicly, you know, that have been about the issue that has been going on. So I wonder about that particular issue, when they post something publicly.
Yeah, well, again, I can't tell you not to post your opinion, and I can't tell you not to respond to those things, but I would, I would say that, really, if you really want to be a good board member, if you really want to use best practice, and I think I said this to you guys during, during our workshop, go to the board meeting with an open mind. Don't go with a check mark for yes or no next to anything on the agenda. Go in with an open mind and be willing to hear what each of you has to say and come to a decision collectively. Because if you go into the board meeting with your heels already dug in, you're not going in with the mindset that this is a collaborative process, and everything that you do is a collaborative process. And you should be informed by what each other has to say, what the public has to say, questions that staff will answer, all of those things. So, you know, you can have an idea of what you think about a particular action item, but really, I encourage you to go in with an open mind and not make up your mind until you've heard every side of the story.
Agreed.
Okay. Okay, so I added, if individual board members are contacted regarding their personal behavior or personal opinions, they may respond personally, making sure to emphasize that they are not speaking on behalf of the board. Is that okay?
Yes, thank you for adding that.
Okay.
May I, Debbie, may I say something about this, this whole section?
Please.
Headed protocol and electronic communications and social media. I have a real problem with that, and I'll tell you why. I think that it should be headed protocol on communications. Why, why are we, why are we limiting this to electronic communications or social media? Some of us, I, speaking for myself, I don't, so I'm not into social media. And I think that whatever we say, whatever protocols that we come up with for social media or emails should be the same for other media. For example, letters to an editor, print media. In other words, if one board member posts frequently on social media, that's fine. But I don't use social media, so maybe instead of posting on social media, I may want to write a letter to the editor with my viewpoint to put across to the community. Or another, another form of, another medium is live contact with district stakeholders. And so I really think that when we talk about, when we talk about communications, I think we should talk about all, all media.
Well, you have, you actually have, that's why I opened this up, Mel. You have a board bylaw, bylaw 9010, that speaks about public statements, and this is the bylaw that addresses all media. I added in the protocol, because the protocol, the problem that you guys seem to be having was centered around social media. And so that's why I suggested that protocol for you. But as you can see from your board bylaw 910, it speaks to all public statements, all public statements made by board members.
Well, let me, let me insert something. Some time ago, if I'm not mistaken, and it's been quite a few months ago, there was a discussion on the board, and the discussion tended to inhibit board members from expressing themselves to the public. And that's right. And, for example, I think that there was a feeling that no board member should write letters to the editor. For example, that any, any, any comments, any comments on anything should be from the president. There should be one voice representing the whole board. But I disagree with that. I think that any board member, in fact, I think board members individually should be encouraged to communicate with the public, with, with, with our constituency, with the district. I think that should be encouraged, because we represent the public, and not only, I think that we should be encouraged to let the public know what our opinions are on unresolved issues, not on, not on past issues that have been determined, but on unresolved issues, and also ask for feedback from the public. I think that, I think that helps us all to do a better job.
Yeah, Mel, I don't disagree with you. The only point I want to make of delineation is, if you want to write a letter to the editor, if you want to write something in the newspaper that's your personal opinion, it has to be clear that it's your personal opinion. It's not the opinion of the board.
And it also should not mention other board members.
Absolutely, that's true. And also, and also, that, that communication has got to be in accordance with the district bylaws. The district, in other words, the district bylaws don't, aren't limited to how we behave in board meetings. The district bylaws, the district bylaws are in effect anytime we as board members communicate.
Correct.
Whether we send an email, whether we do it on, on social media, or whether we have a coffee hour with some, with some friends in the community or whatever, the, we, the bylaws are in effect.
But Mr. Spitz, you, you agree that when someone attacks you, that you, as a, even as a board member, even in the public, when you're not at a board meeting, you will defend yourself. I've seen you do it in the past. This is not, this doesn't mean we can't defend ourselves.
Yeah, I would like to answer that, Tristan. Absolutely. A board member can, can respond. However, a board member doesn't have the right to respond in the same tone that the, whoever it was who wrote, because, I'll tell you why. One of our, in one of our bylaws, we are required to be civil and respectful.
But we know that that is always observed by them.
So let's say somebody writes, writes an email to you and, and just is very, very uncivil, very mean, very mean spirited, very demeaning, disrespectful. The right way to answer that is not in the same tone. In fact, if you answer it in the same tone, you're violating a bylaw. The way you answer that is, the way, the proper way for a board member to answer that is, I'm sorry, you feel the way that you do. I disagree with you. And, and I hope that in the future, we can find common ground for the, for the benefit of all of our students.
But we can agree to disagree. Thank you for your comments.
Is violating a bylaw.
But Mr. Spitz, even when, even back when you got an email from a board member, and this was year, from a community member years ago, this was long before I was on the board, asking you, why on earth would I send my child to a Beverly Hills school? You answered him back, and, and you got a lot of heat for it in the community at the time, saying, well, I can't think of a single reason that you would send your child to these schools, which was an appropriate response, given the tenor of his, if you wouldn't mind.
I don't think I heard what you said. I'd like you to repeat it, because if anybody said to me that they don't want to send their child to our schools, I would, I would say to them that that's your privilege.
Well, what you said was, I can't think of a single reason you would send your child to our schools.
Let's, you guys, let's not talk about mass behaviors. Let's not talk about anything in the past, if you wouldn't mind.
We can't legislate the way that, that we communicate. That is, there is actually law, it's called the First Amendment. So while we can agree that we want to conduct ourselves generally in a dignified and respectful manner, I think everyone is here, that's here, is aware that that does not always happen.
So Tristan, I want to, I want to get you back to BB 9010. And again, this is your bylaw. Only you guys.
We have already entered bylaw 910. We have, we have this already adopted, and it.
Right, you have it already adopted. So I just want to bring, bring to your attention that it does say, actually, about the way that you should communicate with one another and the way you should communicate with the, with the public. When speaking for the district, the board encourages its spokespersons to exercise restraint and tact and to communicate the message in a manner that promotes public confidence in the board's leadership. And so that's pretty strong language with regard to.
That's not our adopted bylaw, though.
This is your adopted bylaw. This, this came from your bylaws.
That's TSB example, our 910 that was adopted in March 2009.
I got this from your district.
Okay, I'm, I'm just.
From your legal.
I printed this out from GAMET. So it starts with, the Board of Education recognizes the rights of board members to freely express their views and encourages open discussion of issues during the board meeting. The board believes that effective board members have a responsibility to express themselves, whether in agreement or disagreement with the board majority, in ways that promote the board's ability to govern the district. When speaking to community groups, the media, or other members of the public, individual board members should recognize that their statements may be perceived as reflecting the views and positions of the board. Board members have a responsibility to identify personal viewpoints as such and not the viewpoint of the board. All public statements authorized to be made on behalf of the board shall be made by the board president, or if appropriate, by the superintendent or other designated representative. That's what our board bylaw, that's from GAMET, that was adopted in 2009 sets.
Okay, because this, this is the one that was forwarded to me from legal counsel, so I'm sorry if it's.
So, I mean, I know part of the conversation that led up to this discussion of the Governance Handbook was looking at policy, but that's not on the agenda for today, is changing the policy that we already have, but this is the policy that we.
Well, we do want to make our board, we do want to make our protocols consistent with your bylaws. You're absolutely right.
Yeah.
So how do you feel, Tristan, how do you feel that that bylaw is in conflict with this protocol?
Well, I think when you try to say what is okay and what is not okay to say, with the tone or the demeanor, I think everyone interprets things differently. And I'll, to, instead of going backwards into the distant past, I'll go to, you know, what happened within the last couple of months. I think that the email that I responded back to a community member who had expressed displeasure with something that I had said, or the way that I had said it in a board meeting, was actually rather respectful. Other people may read it and not take the same viewpoint, but to sit here and try to, try to filter it, that we have to be in agreement to what it is that is respectful and what it is that is not respectful when responding to a personal attack. I just don't think that's the place of the board to create that, that, that requirement.
But I think in your response, Tristan, I think you were fine until I think you, and I don't have the email in front of me, but I, I do remember you then negatively attacking her personality, and I think that's what kind of evolved. And then you posted it on Facebook, which I.
Hang on a second. She came to the meeting.
You posted it on Facebook at some point.
Nope.
Or not on Facebook, WhatsApp.
Let it publicly.
Can I just finish, please? Because I haven't.
You're not accurate at all. She came and read it into the public record, which she was encouraged to do, and then it was shared.
No, no, that's not what happened. No, no.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Well, you guys, let me intervene here.
Someone who's not on social media.
Can I intervene for a second? This is a moot, this is a moot point, because this, the protocols in the bylaw are not applicable. We're not talking about someone who's personally attacking you, because if someone were personally attacking me, it's really up to me to choose how I want to respond or don't respond. And, you know, as long as you're not responding on behalf of the board in a negative way, I mean, if, if someone says, your, your district is a horrible district, and, and I don't, would never send my child there, if you were to respond with that same sort of tone as an individual board member, that would be inappropriate. But if someone posted or said or came to a meeting and said, Deb Dudley, you're a liar, and, and you're, you cheat on your husband and you're a terrible mother, you know, I have, I have the ability and I have the right to respond to them any way that I like, because it's a personal.
Thank you.
So, so we're talking about two different things. We're talking about a personal attack versus an attack on the district and the board. You know, now that all said, you're in the, you're in the public eye. You are public property. You are a politician. And so anything that, any way that you behave is a reflection of the work that you're doing as a board member, and, and what people are going to think of you as a board member, and could have a reflective ability or an ability to reflect poorly on the board. So we do want to be cognizant of that, but we really can't regulate, there's no way, I would even assume, to regulate how someone responds to a personal attack.
Thank you. And I'm fine with the community knowing that I'm not a doormat. I'm okay with that.
Tristan, Tristan, can I, I would like to address something that someone said, you know, we've discussed our views on this many times, and you know how I feel. I'm not a social media person, and, but someone sent me an email yesterday that you posted, and I've often said to you that sometimes that reflects on the whole board. And this was a perfect example of that. I don't know if you remember, but I can read it. They sent it to me. I didn't, I didn't get it from you, but it said something about, I know that you were referring to something that you asked to come before the board with the president, I believe. You said, we've asked for an update on plans or something. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but then you said, this should be a priority over all the nonsense, specifically the attempt to railroad through a governance handbook, weaponizing policy specifically on social media six months before an election that could replace three board members. Now, to me, that, that was a reflection on the board, as far as I was concerned, and I was pretty upset by it. I, I really, I almost fell off the chair when she sent it to me, because I, I thought that was, that hurt me, that. I thought that was, that hurt me, that I'm, we're discussing this as nonsense. And I, I don't believe that so, I think we're setting something that, every district, every school district has a governance handbook, and, and we're doing something that is probably universal. So I, I got hurt by that, and I, I just wanted to share that with you. And I, I didn't call you or ask, I don't want to get into words, I just read it. And I think this is an example of where I've often said to you that what you say affects the whole board. And that was the one time I thought it did.
And I, and I'm happy, I mean, I, you have every right to have your opinion, Mrs. Marcus, but I do believe that in the middle of a pandemic, when we have kids that are losing learning every day and over the summer and potentially into the fall, that the time that we are spending talking about a governance handbook that's going to be employed for the next six months, when we have three positions open 196 days from now, is not a good use of our time. I think it's a distraction. I think that any, any time that we spend, so, and I have the right-
You have the right to feel that way. I feel that a person who's on the board already would probably be better able to make governance decisions than somebody who's coming on as a new board member. That's what, that's the way I saw it, so I, I just-
But a governance handbook reflects the values of the board. This board is only gonna be in this format for another 196 days.
Tristan, I just want to assure you, I want to assure you that this was a-
And my opinion, that's what I ought to be-
And I hope you have some trust in me by this point. But I want to assure you that this was not a, an item that was, had a, an agenda behind it. This was an item of me-
Well, it wasn't for you. And I do understand-
Honestly, this was me following up with your district to, to finish the loop, to finish the work that I had started with you. And I do feel, I'm gonna, I'm gonna disagree with you here. I do feel it's really important, and it's not just because this is my work. I think this is really important in times of crisis, especially with the tough decisions you're gonna be making in the next six months, to make sure you have a roadmap in front of you, because it can get ugly. And in districts like LA, look at what's going on in LA with the, the teachers' union contract they just passed. Their board meetings are ugly.
Right, but ours are.
And they're not following any, they're not following any kind of evidence. Yeah, and I know yours are not, and I don't want them, I don't want them to get there.
And we have functioned really well as a board, and we have voted more ton, like, like Noah was saying earlier, I think it's actually more than 95% of the time we vote together. That's not the issue. This is an issue that has, that started to rear its head back when we first had our governance workshop, when we first talked about it, and then came back because of the conversation about coffees, because of the email from a, from a community member that was a personal attack, and what trailed from that. So this was-
So I had, I had no knowledge of, of why it came back.
So I just wanted to say, Tristan, I, I just want to say, I just want to say, because I also did get that post that Mrs. Marcus just read, and I just want to say that I only learned, everything that you all learned as far as what today, that the agenda for today came to me in the same format that you all received, which was an email from Dr. Bregge. And so it wasn't like I had any planning whatsoever since our last board meeting in public about following up. And I, unbeknown to me, as Dr. Bregge expressed and explained, Deb, Deb contacted him, I guess, what, last week or a few weeks ago? I don't even know when they spoke. And we got an email, I got it at the same time you did, I had no, Dr. Bregge and I have spent some time together on negotiations. Never did this issue come up once. Am I telling the truth, Dr. Bregge, or not?
Um, yeah, so I mean, I was, yeah, Deb contacted me, um, a couple of weeks ago and just said, how are you with this? Um, this was in draft form, where are you with this? And, and that's when I said, I know, um, we've had a lot of stuff come to us before the board. Um, you know, I, I know that it was in draft form, um, I think we're close to finishing it. Um, and, and I'll make sure that we, that we finish it, and I just said, I need your help.
Yeah, and this is the second district I've worked with this week to finish this up. And so it's just, luckily, I've had a little time on my hands, because I'm not traveling all the time doing workshops. So I followed up with six districts in the last two weeks to ask that I've done workshops with around the same time I did with yours, just to make sure I closed the loop and finished the work. So that's where this came from, this didn't have-
Well, this, this was placed on the agenda by Isabel on March 10th, or for the agenda meeting on the 10th, um, for a discussion, and not about, not just-
Um, Tristan, I'm specifically saying that, yeah, I just said that in my comments. I agree with you, I'm not disputing that. I am, I'm sorry. I'm saying that we did have this discussion in public. But I did not know that we were going to have a, um, a facilitator in this process, and I remember that.
And just so you guys know, I volunteered to do this at no cost to the district, just because I wanted to finish, I wanted to, so you're not being charged for my time today. I volunteered to do this just because I wanted to, I wanted to close the loop. So it's just me trying to do my due diligence and, and make sure that the work I started gets finished. And honestly, you can ask Sac City, Sacramento City-
So let's close the loop, what's next?
Same work with them last week. So let's, can we finish this protocol? Are, are you, do you guys have an openness and a willingness to finish this protocol? Okay, great.
I would love to.
Love to. Um, so I have to change some of the numbering, how about, so we've discussed items one and two, how about item number three? Item number three is just a philosophical best practice. What we hope to use social media for is really to celebrate the stuff that's going, I think it's a powerful tool. I don't think we should ever say we shouldn't use social media. But it should really be used as a tool to celebrate the things happening in the districts and to inform, to inform our community about upcoming events, about things that we want them engaged in, even using, uh, using it as a polling tool to see how people feel about things that are coming up. Um, I think it's really important to make sure social media is used as a celebratory, um, a celebratory tool for the, for the district. Do any of you disagree?
So, so Deb, no, Deb, I just wanted to say, the second word, it says, we will use our personal Facebook, Twitter, et cetera. I think it said, we, it should say, we may. I don't think, not anything should dictate what we do with our personal accounts, ever.
No, again, this is ju, again, philosophical statement.
I know. Yeah, I get it, and I agree with all of it, I think, I think, I think we do.
Or if, or it could be if we choose, or it could say if we choose to use our personal.
Make, make, allows, allows board members to know that if you want to celebrate district successes, you may use your personal account to do that.
Yeah. Um, the second-
And then we're okay with that.
The second line is, is put in there for a reason, and delineates the job of the district Facebook and other social media outlets from the district. Something was happening with a few boards that I worked with where the district was posting an agenda and individual board members were posting the same agenda and highlighting items they wanted the community to be aware of. But it wa, there was really a statement saying, you know, be, be aware, this is coming up and I don't agree with it. It was sort of a cla, um, a masked, um, endorsement or, or problem with a particular items. So it's really the job of the district Facebook to post any district-specific information or district legally required posting information. It's, it's really not a, a best practice of board members to do it unless they post it verbatim.
Well, a lot of times we, uh, share that stuff. We just share from the different-
That's fine, but I would prefer you share it, if you're gonna share it.
In its entirety.
And share it in its entirety.
Yeah, that's, that's all we do, yeah.
Okay. Um, this is gonna, this paragraph I put in because I'm hoping that you will, um, have this handbook after the election. I think one of the hardest things or one of the, one of the biggest problems I see is that people campaign on a particular agenda or may campaign on a negative platform against the district. But you have to agree that when somebody is on your board and the campaigning and posturing is over, that, um, you will agree to not disparage the decisions, actions, or, or each other on your personal Facebook page. And again, I can't tell you what to do or not to do, this is not written in law. This is a best practice, this is a suggested best practice.
I don't know that I even experienced that, I don't know that that happened as a result, I, I can't imagine. I, I don't, I don't think, Tristan, I don't know that you felt that way at all. I don't know, I did not feel any disparaging remarks.
No, I was, I was saying for the upcoming, in the upcoming six months, I don't think you had this problem before. I was putting that in for future.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I haven't had that problem, I haven't had that experience, I agree with Mrs. Marcus.
So let's look at number four, you guys, because I think this is one that we'll, we might need to add some language to.
Yeah, I'm, I, there was a line that I read-
We take it out, actually.
Yeah, completely agree. Totally agree. You, no, the district and the board can't limit free speech.
Again, it, it wasn't, it wasn't meant to be limiting, it was just meant to be a suggested best practice.
I know that you don't see it that way, but that's not the way that it's interpreted, in my opinion. And, and there are actually quite a few other places where, in our bylaws of a variety of sorts, which a lot of them I've listed already, we have things like, um, this one is 9005, governance standards, ensure opportunities for the diverse range of views in the community to inform, inform board deliberations. Well, sometimes that happens through social media, because it's a public platform, and WhatsApp, because it's a public platform. That's where people go to share their opinions, certainly more so now than ever before. I've had over 80 people join a chat from before spring break happened until now, because if they feel like it's a place that they can make themselves heard and they won't come all the time to board meetings to share. And because it's open to everyone, that's a platform a lot of people take advantage of. So I'm not going to agree to language that restricts the way that I can communicate or discuss or answer people's questions or give them direction to go back to, you know, a senior staff member.
So let me ask you, Deb, a question, Deb, may I ask a question, please? So shouldn't we have a distinction as to if people are gonna use social media or go and write a letter to the paper, that, you know, they be clear in the capacity that they're signing their name to that letter or, you know, hosting that group or posting? I mean, we have, we have a so, we have a, we have official platforms that are designated for the district. And so I would assume that if we're using that platform, if we're a represent, if we're at a meeting representing our district, or if we're on a live, you know, chat group like we are right now, representing, um, the district, then I think it's important to have debate, if debate is available. If not, then you would have to, I would assume, if a decision has been taken, that you're going to stand by the decision of the district or the board.
Well, I want to ask you guys a question, let me ask you a question, and let, let's get to some language that I think we can agree on. Do you think it serves the bo, the district as a whole in any way for an individual board member to disparage the work that the district has voted to, the things that the district has voted to work on? Do you think it benefits the board in any way?
No. No, no, but I don't, I don't see this as that.
Okay, okay, so that's where I want to make the distinction. If, if you wanna, if I want to say, um, this item is coming up, here's my opinion on it, I'd love to get the community's opinion on it, I think that's okay. But if the board voted on something, whatever it may be, like to do distance learning, and we voted, we're gonna do this, and for one board member to write a letter to the editor or put it on Facebook or, or start a blog about why this is such a bad idea, I don't think serves any of you. Doesn't serve you well, not as me.
I agree with that.
I'd agree. Deb, I agree, and I don't think we do that. I think what we're really talking about is before things come to a vote, that's when we decide to, and that's when the community engages us, as they should, as us being their representatives. So that's when you do, when you do have conversations that come up and you do have opinions flying around that may wind up on Facebook or Instagram or whatever, from, from, from board members or even in conversations. It simply goes, hey, I spoke to somebody and this is what they said. You know, this is not, and it's an individual opinion, while this board member thinks this about getting textbooks, you know, for, for high school geometry, you know?
Right. And Noah, that's what you're elected to do.
Have an opinion about that.
That's what you're elected to do. But I, I, I'm just, as a best practice, it's best if you can speak with a unified voice about the things that you want to have done, because again, you need to, to get anything done in a district, it needs to bubble up from the community, it needs to have community buy-in. And if the community is hearing something from three board members and something different from the other two, just like I talked about, the misinformation that's out there with COVID-19, you guys, they need to have one voice of, this is what the district's doing, this is what we've agreed to do, whether we all agreed to do it or didn't agree to do it, we're standing behind it and we're moving forward with it. And not have it, not have there be discouraged disparaging voices out there saying, I think my fellow board members are idiots for voting for this, and I don't think we should be doing this. That doesn't, that doesn't inspire community confidence. So I know that's not what's happening, but that's the point that you're trying to make. So I want to try to get to some language about what's appropriate for individual board members to communicate and what is inappropriate for individual board members.
I, I think, Deb, if you take out the first sentence that, that steps on the First Amendment, and just say, we agree to speak with one voice through district messaging, we could send our community clear message, I think, we, we hired a director of communication to do that. You know, that's, we, we, we were floundering in that area, and we felt strongly that the district needed support in that. Um, so I think, in, in a sense of, of talking about district messaging, I agree with that, as long as it's not stepping on anybody's First Amendment. So I'm okay with that sentence as it is, as you just presented it.
I think it needs to say, it needs to say something that's more specific about being district, uh, the district's viewpoint. I think, um, hold on, with the one that I was reading before. On our bylaws, it says, "All public statements authorized to be made on behalf of the board shall be made by the board president, or if appropriate, by the superintendent or other designated representative." I think that's reasonable. That also implies that any statement made outside of the board president or the superintendent is not an official board statement. And I think that needs to be incorporated into number four.
I'm sorry, can you, I did not get that at all, can you, can you say that again?
Board bylaw 9010, that, that was adopted in 2009, says, the last pair, the last line says, "All public statements authorized to be made on behalf of the board shall be made by the board president, or if appropriate, by the superintendent or other designated representative." I think that's what that line should say, I don't. The part that says, "Through the district's official messaging", can be presumed to say that board members won't speak outside of official messaging channels. And I don't think that's appropriate.
Well, then, if that's the case, then going back to what Noah said, what, what is the purpose of our communications person? I, I wouldn't agree to that. I don't, I think these are two different, I, I think these are-
Our public, our press releases to discuss-
Yeah, but I think this is- I, I think then, I think that the norm here is just to say that once, I read this as, once things have passed, something has, has, an item has passed, that we are either messaging that with the comment, with a common, you know, voice, or that if we're in the minority, we're gonna stand behind what was voted. I mean, just as Deb had given.
That's in the next, uh, protocol, actually, explaining no votes. Trustees present the ideas and questions during deliberation. They do not explain their votes after the vote is taken. Board members agree to stand behind the majority vote of the board and not be an impediment to implementation. That's as succinctly as I could put it.
So, not to belabor anything, but the part that says, "They do not explain their votes", hold on, you just moved it, "They do not explain their votes after the vote is taken." If a community member comes up after a vote is taken and says, "I wasn't able to go to the board meeting, I didn't hear everything that you said, can you explain to me why? I know you voted no, but why? What were the issues, what were the reasons why that you voted no on this?"
That's an individual person, that's an individual conversation. Tristan, what we're talking about here is explaining in public no votes. Going to a, going to the newspaper and saying, "I voted against this because." So it's, it's being, uh, it's not, you're, explaining to one person what happened isn't being an impediment. Explaining on a Facebook page could be construed as being an impediment.
Uh, Deb, the, the other issue is, though, the newspapers often pick up on our deliberations and will report why certain members of either city council or the board voted no on something. It just happened recently, uh, with council. Um, so, and, and that comes, that, right, that's gonna happen, it's gonna be out there. And those are available electronically, those newspapers all over town, people will take them and post the articles and do all that, all out of our control. So we could say, so we could say that, that, um, we do not explain their no votes after it's taken. I think you could say, uh, in a certain venue, we might not explain it, but if we're asked, we're gonna explain it to, like you said, to individuals. If people personally ask us, um, well, I'm not gonna shy away from the question.
Right. I would just encourage you, I would-
I think the point in that question, that you have to write in something to the effect that with regard to decisions that are made, in other words, once, and this is redundant against what we have said earlier in this, uh, document, but with, with, we agree that they should not post individual opinions, but with regard, when decisions have been made, with regard to when decisions have been made, you might finally make that clear as to what point in time we would prefer or we would like to be able to be seen as working with one voice, or to whatever the vote was.
Okay, I, I just added that in, taken in, decision has been made. So, um-
I still don't agree with the, "They do not explain their votes after the vote is taken" as is, I don't agree. That needs to be modified.
Again, again, Noah- Again, Noah, I'm just suggesting a best practice. If it were me, I would say the best practice, even if someone asked me why I voted that way, I would say, I refer you to the minutes of the deliberation. You know, because what good does it do, any of you, to come out publicly in any way to anybody against the implementation of the vote of the board?
But that's not, that's, I don't think that's.
I, I don't read it as that. I read it as, as, it's our right, it's every one of our rights to vote yea or nay on any item. And if, and let's say the minutes of the newspapers or whatever do not reflect the reasons why we voted no, you can't guarantee that that's going to be readily available. And if somebody asks you, what, why did, I'm just curious, why did you vote no on that? Are we, what are we supposed to say? I can't tell you?
No.
That doesn't make any sense.
That's exactly what happened with the weekly.
I'm sorry. I don't think Deb is saying no to that.
About the district calendar, it was the weekly.
I'm not suggesting, you know what, it depends on the person, you guys. I'm not suggesting that you shouldn't explain yourself. But if it's a reporter and he's asking me why I voted no, I'm going to refer him to the board deliberation. I'm not going to say anything more because I'm just adding fuel to the fire at that point.
Well, that. Many, many times they're going by what they heard at the board meeting. They are posting what has been said by the paper, what they're hearing from the meeting itself. They have not come to us to ask, generally speaking, they don't come to you after you've said it. It's being posted because they've got, they've got the transcription, they can hear it and they're, they're saying it because they've actually heard.
But that's not always accurate. If this, this is with the district calendar, that's exactly what, what started that issue, Mrs. Marcus, with you and I, with what we said to the paper, was that they had improperly quoted the things that I had said in the board meeting, despite the fact that it was recorded, despite the fact that there was closed captioning available. And so I had reached out and said, hey, you got my statements wrong. And the paper said, okay, clarify your statements. And that was when I gave my clarification, but they posted it and just said that this was a statement from me. And then you responded because you felt like I was attacking the whole group, which is not what happened. I was only trying to clarify something that they had gotten wrong. So we have to be able to stay our position. And in addition to which, we haven't taken a vote yet on that district calendar. So that was an ongoing discussion over time. You know, we have to be able to, and, and the public has the right to know. From, when I was considering the calendar, I had a bullet.
After, after we took the vote, excuse me, after we took the vote, I recall for two more meetings and when it was time for the report, when we could speak our minds at the end of the meeting, you again brought up the calendar again.
Because we hadn't adopted the calendar. It had to go back to the union and we had not, no, we did not have agreement on the calendar.
So guys, I just want to remind you of, can I, can I stop this for a second? I just want to remind you of a basic principle of boardsmanship. And that is, there are no successful board members on unsuccessful boards. You guys will either be thought of as high performing and a, a great team who's working well together on behalf of kids, or you'll be thought of as a warring, a group of people who are warring with one another. And so how do you want to be remembered? How do you want to be thought of? I mean, if it's me, you know, I, looking back 10 years from now, I want to be thought of as a high performing board who is doing great things on behalf of kids, not a group of people who are at war with one another. Because all that does is it creates conflict in your community. People don't know which board member or whose opinions to believe. And it just creates a, a feeling of uncomfortableness in your community where they don't, they don't feel like you're a cohesive group working together. If you were a board of directors for a company I was going to invest in, hearing the discourse that I'm hearing, I wouldn't invest in you today because I couldn't believe that you could work together toward success. And so it's really important to think about the perception. I know it's so hard. Believe me, I had people, one of the cashiers from my local grocery store came to me and came in a board meeting, in a public meeting during, um, negotiations when we had a hundred people in the boardroom and said that I was a liar and said horrible things about me. And as a board member, I, sitting at the dais, I couldn't respond. All I could do is ask for a, ask the board president to give us a 10-minute break because I was in tears. No one's ever talked to me that way. But I didn't respond and I didn't add fuel to the fire. And when people wrote things in the newspaper about things that I had done or things that the board had done, it's almost best not to respond and let it go away than start a public war and just move on to the things that are important. And refer people to, that's why we keep minutes. Refer people, refer the reporter or whoever the person is asking you the question, say, you know what, I don't want to belabor this issue because I said what I had to say during deliberation. The vote was taken, I lost, okay? I voted no, I lost. I'm not going to, I'm not going to even dignify it by belaboring the issue. It is what it is. It's water under the bridge. I'm not going to stand in the way of it being implemented. And I know it's, it's really hard as, because we're human, not to defend ourselves. But you need, you're, it, you're bigger than, once you're elected to public office, you're public property. And you have a, you have a responsibility, uh, you know, a moral imperative to really display the kind of behavior that inspires confidence. So that's all I want to say on the subject. Um, nothing that we say, and by the way, you know, you guys are talking about the Constitution, nothing that we say in these protocols can be unconstitutional. You have your constitutional right to do whatever you want to do. There is no protocols police. No one's going to come here, come tomorrow and say you're breaking a protocol. But these are best practices. I'm just telling you ways that I see successful board members and successful boards being the most successful they can be. So this is just guidance. And, and it gives you just food for thought that before you, the next time you think about posting something or the next time you think about writing to the, the media, is this going to be inspire confidence in my community and the work that we're doing together? Really, really important to, you know, always have that filter by which you, um, put any decisions or any comments that you make through. Is this going to inspire confidence in my community? Does this show the community that we're a high functioning group of, of elected people who are doing the best things for kids?
Um, on this issue, on the, on that, is, is it possible instead of, because I want to get behind this no vote thing, I'm having a little bit of a struggle with it, but instead of saying they do not explain their votes, can we say they should not because the word should then would indicate best practices?
Yes.
As opposed to, and then it would, I wouldn't feel so constrained about subjective situations, you know, where.
Where are you reading that, Noah? Where are you putting that?
Under explaining no votes.
Oh, down at, I'm sorry, okay. Have we left up above then? We've left the other topics up above? Did we decide?
Well, they jumped to this one, I'm not sure why, but they.
On four and five.
And what I wanted to do, guys, to tie up the other one, I think we should add the language from board bylaw ninety to ten be added under number four. We speak with one new voice through district official messaging so that not to send our community messages clear or to, so that we send our community clear messages on priorities and progress toward district goals. And then add the, if, if you're all comfortable with it, add the language that Tristan wrote, read to us from your adopted, and I'm sorry, I got the wrong adopted. I thought the other one that I got from legal counsel was what was adopted, but your adopted board bylaw nine, um, ninety ten, to probably be added in there so there's clarification. Is that okay?
I think, um, those bylaws, the bylaws that you have is what, um, was, was sent to us as, as a, I think he sent three of them, Jabari sent three, um, different bylaws. And so we were going to look at those, but it probably is, is the same one that Tristan read, just a different version, maybe more updated version. So I'm going to try to bring it back.
Okay.
Jabari sent that, I think, as, as options.
Okay, well, the, what you should be looking at and what language you should add is the one that's adopted. Because it, it, you, you guys could change that language if you choose to, but then you'd have to vote to re, to change the language in board bylaw ninety ten. And that's separate from this.
Yep.
Okay?
Okay.
Well, I want to hear, is everybody in agreement with that? I don't hear Noah, I mean, I heard, all I hear is Noah and Tristan. I don't see Mall anymore. Um, Mall, are you still with us?
I'm very much.
Okay, great, thank you. And Ms. Marcus?
I'm here. I've been here the whole time.
Would you agree with that suggestion?
Yeah, I, I'm ready, yeah, absolutely.
I still don't like number four. Not the whole thing, but the way that it's word, the way that it's worded. I think, um.
What, what could you add to it Tristan that would make you more comfortable with it? Maybe you would add something at the beginning?
I'm sorry?
Would you add something at, at the beginning with regard to board action or board goals? We agree to speak with one voice? So to delineate what we're speaking about?
I just, I, I think that, I think that we need to stick to the media relations, the communications. I don't think that this should be about board members. I think it should be about authorized statements, um, come through our communications department and superintendent and board president. I don't think, you know, this to me is too ambiguous. And I absolutely know that, that at some point this is going to come back and someone's going to say, oh, well, you agreed in this governance that you'll speak with one voice, but you went out and said this and that's not the, the official board position. I just, I think it creates ambiguity. I think the only, I, I mean, I just think it creates ambiguity.
Do you want to replace all this language with what's in board bylaw ninety ten? Do you feel that that's ambiguous or?
Well, no, because.
Feel that that's clear?
No, I think that's perfectly clear. I think that's perfectly clear.
Okay, so why don't I just take this out and say replace with board bylaw ninety ten?
Let's put the bylaw in there then.
I'm fine with that if you're fine with that.
Great, I'm totally fine with that. Do you want me to send it to you?
Um, no, why don't you give it to, because this is going to go to Dr. Breggy. So why don't we, um, send it to Dr. Breggy and I'll just say replace?
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
And I, and I have it because I pulled it up on my other computer, so.
Okay, so number four will be replaced by bylaw ninety ten.
If you read it, please again, read it again, please.
The whole thing?
Would you mind reading it Tristan?
Sure, not at all. Uh, the Board of Education recognizes the rights of board members to freely express their views and encourages open discussion of issues during the board meeting. The board believes that effective board members have a responsibility to express themselves, whether in agreement or disagreement with the board majority, in ways that promote the board's ability to govern the district. When speaking to community groups, the media or other members of the public, individual board members should recognize that their statements may be perceived as reflecting the views and positions of the board. Board members have a responsibility to identify personal viewpoints as such and not as the viewpoint of the board. All public statements authorized to be made on behalf of the board shall be made by the board president or if appropriate by the superintendent or other designated representative.
The only, only feel that I've said this before, that I sometimes feel that even when you speak as your own person, it sometimes does reflect on the board. That's the only thing that I've said a couple of times. I, I, I don't often, I, I agree with whatever is there, but sometimes it does come back to reflect on the whole board.
Okay, so as long as we're all aware of that, I think we're good. Okay, public input during board meetings. You all read that? Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
I think, again, uh, it should say, uh, in there at the beginning of the meeting because that's the way we run our meetings.
Okay, so right now it says before or during the board's consideration of the item. So I'm just going to say at the beginning of the meeting.
Yes. That's, that is the way we run the meeting, so.
Well, I thought we were going to check on that and see if we are operating according to, uh, California of the laws of the, uh.
So I, I did, um, I did, uh, during the meeting, I, uh, my ADD kicked in, so I, I did ask, um, Jabari. And, um, so the answer is this, uh, Dr. Breggy, see below, both the education code and the government code allow the district to hold one public comment period for members of the community to address the board on any action item on the agenda before the board considers the items. Uh, and it's education code, section three, five, one, four, five, uh, point five. Um, it is the intent of the legislator, legislature that members of the public may be able to place matters directly, uh, to the school district business on the agenda. Every agenda for regular meetings shall provide an opportunity for members of the public to directly address the governing board on any of the items, uh, before or during the governing board, uh, consideration of the items. So it, what we're doing is, uh, in, in practice, it's, you can do before or during.
Okay, cool. I, I'll reference that code and I just clarified at the beginning of the meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, explaining no votes, I think we've gone through this one. Is everybody cool with the new language?
I think we've beat it to death.
Okay. Informal board reports at board meetings.
What, what is exactly meant by this, an informal board report?
Um, so when, like at the end of the meeting, when they say, does the board have any?
Board communication.
Anything they want to report?
So we, so we call it communication from board members. So I just didn't know what that was referring to. So, okay, thank you.
Should we say that on there then?
Yeah.
Can we put that in there that way so we know that there's no confusion as to what it is?
That's great, I agree.
I have a question, uh, for Deb. You know, sometimes.
I just, I think it should be board reports, uh, conclusion of board meetings or something like that.
Deb, I wanted to.
I think you should.
Comments by board members.
Huh?
I think comments by board members or communication from board members is, is clear enough.
At the, at the end of the meeting, that's.
At the end of the meeting. It doesn't, what does it say at the end of the meeting?
It doesn't. You could do it anytime you want. Some people do it at the upfront, some people do it at the end. It depends on when you want to do it.
But we do it at the end, so I mean, and if that's what we're doing, let's keep it that way, but let's let them know that that's when they do it.
Okay. You got it, there you go. Go ahead, Isabel, what was your question?
Actually, um, what my question was about public input. When people come to the board and they have a statement to read, sometimes they make, they're asking a question, a rhetorical question sometimes, and some board members want to respond. I, I think it's okay to respond, but that has to be, I think, in, captured in here because there's a lot of confusion sometimes from people in the public where they say, well, you know, I guess the best practice is not to respond, I understand that, but.
You're not allowed to respond actually by law.
Well, okay, so here's where it gets interesting because I've, I've sometimes have been told that you can. So which is it? Can you or can you not? And if it can't, I would like to capture that because I've had board members say, I'd like to respond and it, it puts the board in a, it's very uncomfortable because you, you know, you, you don't want to not have that board member not respond since they've interrupted the meeting now and now they, they've made it public that they want to respond. So what is it? Let's capture it.
Where's the board bylaw?
I'll give you the easy, I'll give you the easy answer to that and you have a bylaw about it already. So at the beginning of the meeting, when.
Tristan, you've responded, you've asked me, I'd like to respond, like, and I said, okay, like.
Okay.
So.
Here's the point of delineation.
And then I will read the bylaw.
Yeah, if a person is there to ask a question or comment on an agendized item, an item that is agendized, you can respond. If they are there and they're bringing up something that is a non-agendized item, you cannot respond. And I'll tell you why you can't respond. And this is a little statement when I was board president, I would make at the beginning of public comment. I would say, I want the public to understand that if they're speaking to us on an agendized item, we may be able to respond or refer their question to staff. And that's usually what we would do, refer your question to staff if we don't have an easy answer for you. easy answer for you. If you're speaking to us on an item that's not on the agenda, by law, we're not allowed to respond to you. And the reason being that we cannot discuss any items that are not on today's agenda, because if you're here to speak to us about it, there might be 100 other people who want to speak to us about it, and it wouldn't be fair to the rest of the public to have a discussion about something they were not aware that we were discussing. So all discussion items have to be only on agendized items. So that's the little speech I would make as board president.
No, that's great.
So that keeps it really clear.
But that's, you're talking about public comment about an agenda. That's different.
No, because I remember when BHF came and they had some public comment about, it was public comment, they were not on the agenda. You wanted to respond, and I said, okay, but then I was asked, are you not allowed to? And so I made a mistake, I think. I should not have, because it wasn't on the agenda. It wasn't like we had a BHF update. It was public comment. So I think I should have said no.
No, our Board Bylaw 9323 talks about meeting conduct, and item number three on the second page says, without taking action, board members or district staff members may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed by the public about items not appearing on the agenda. Additionally, on their own initiative, or in response to a question posed by the public, a board or staff member may ask a question for clarification, make a brief announcement, or make a brief report of his or her own activities. It's in our bylaws.
So I think that these, that's why, so this is the problem, right, that Tristan just said, I think they're like at odds with each other, because one of them said.
No, it's Tristan's interpretation of it that's at odds with us, okay? So if someone says something like about something that's on the agenda, you can say, I'd like to refer that question to staff, or staff, would you mind getting back to this person about their question? Let's say someone says, I think the grass should be cut at the high school. The grass looks like, it looks like a jungle out there. You could say, staff, would you get their name and number, maybe talk to them about, or respond to them about our grass cutting schedule? It's appropriate to do something like that. It's not appropriate to make a comment about or have a discussion about a non-agendized item. That is the law. And I don't know who led to adopt the bylaw in that way.
The public statement, the public statement is the opportunity that was taken by our foundation president to publicly dress me down for asking questions about our summer school agreement that BHF and BHUSD have together, asking about the start dates and how it was determined, and what is the impact. And we had already had already a discussion two weeks before that, and she didn't like that I had asked for the backup from that discussion from staff. So she came to criticize me for asking the questions, for asking for information. And so that was not an agendized item. That was a personal address to me as a board member. Specifically, she mentioned me by name. And consistent with this board bylaw, I have the right to respond to the accusations that she had made and the way that she addressed me.
It was an agendized item, though.
It was not. It had been an agendized item weeks before. We had both put it on it.
You should not be responding to it Tristan. Tristan, you should not be responding to it. If it was not on the agenda for action.
Statements made or questions posed by the public about items not appearing on the agenda.
Deb, I'm looking at, Deb, I'm looking at the policy right now.
Yeah.
And it's pretty clear that regarding, and I'm only talking about our items not on the agenda.
Yes.
If it's not on the agenda, our policy says that board members or district staff may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed about items not on the agenda. Now, this happens where we might hear something from somebody in the public at a meeting, and then the board president can take that and say, thank you for your input, and ask, and we ask the staff to look into that and get back to the board.
That's exactly right. So that's the definition of a brief response.
Okay, but I'm saying, I'm saying we are allowed to respond.
Yes, in a brief, but you're not allowed to enter into a discussion.
Right.
We can't, because it says without taking action, which means we can't deliberate, we can't move on anything.
So you know what? I need this to be, Noah, you know what? I appreciate your input, but it's unhelpful in the sense that it's not clear still. I really want to have direction, because what is very, I think this is really difficult, when you're the president of the board, and then somebody comes, and you never know what they're going to say on the other side. And so it's incoming. And then you have a board member, and you, you know, I did, I honestly, you know, Tristan was like, I want to respond. And it just catches everything. So I want to know what we should legally be able to do and not do. And so I do understand if something's on the agenda, I totally get it, we can respond.
So again, what Tristan's reading, it says a brief response. And what's, it's your interpretation of what a brief response is.
What is a brief response?
A brief response is usually, we're going to, staff will get back to you on that, or staff, can you answer that person's question, or staff, can you provide that person with the information they're requesting? That's a brief response. A brief response is not going into, well, when we voted on that, blah, 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 and this and that, and the other thing happened. That's not a brief response.
Okay, so that clarifies it for me, is that, but I need to make, I need to make sure everyone's in agreement, because I don't want to start arguing, or, you know, having a debate about whether someone should speak or not speak in public when this is happening.
So I'm going to tell you where boards have gotten into trouble with this. So I can't tell you the board, but I can tell you sort of the circumstance. Someone came to a board meeting and accused the board of being discriminatory in their practices, of awarding a contract to a food service provider that was not, was not ethnically diverse. And the board was, should not have responded, because they had voted on it. It wasn't agendized. They had voted on it at a previous meeting. And they got in a discussion with this person, because the brief response should have been, from the superintendent, the superintendent will get you the information on the racial makeup and, you know, profile of the company that we provided, you know, and the background for why we provided them with this contract. That should have been their brief response, okay? And the superintendent could have gotten back to that person and explained to them everything that they went through to make their decision. Instead, the board, one of the board members said, I want to respond to that. And so they responded to that, and it was a back and forth that lasted two and a half hours. And they were sued for having a discussion about a non-agendized item, because other people would have liked to have been there to discuss that item as well, and it wasn't on the agenda, and they spent two and a half hours on it, because they had a back and forth discussion. So you don't want to, you don't want to go down that road, guys. You don't want to go down that road. If it's somebody who's asking a question, you could even say something as simple Tristan is, I can talk to you about that after the meeting, but it's not agendized, and it's really not appropriate for discussion at this time.
Well, we already had a meeting scheduled. She was encouraged to come and speak publicly. Again, it happened on the same day that that other community member came and decided to read an email in public, both of which were encouraged.
I understand it's hard. It's really hard not to defend yourself in that situation. But I'm just, again, I'm just telling you, I'm, you know, it's my job to try to keep you guys out of the courtroom and try to make you as high a functioning board as I can. And so my, in my opinion, you should have a sidebar conversation with her, one to one, in another forum.
I just want to say, I know what the bylaw says. We have, there's bylaw and there's practice. Even though we're allowed to do something, it has always been our practice to not respond to public comment at all. It keeps us clear, and it's much easier if we abide by that practice. Now, that being said, board communication is the time for a board member if they do want to respond. And I think a board member should be allowed to respond to anything at that point, and I think anything goes, because I think, I mean, within reason of our governance ability. But I think if we continue the practice of not responding to public comment at all, then it's a lot easier to manage, and we say it upfront. And I think the community has gotten pretty used to, because they'll say, hey, I know you guys can't respond to this, but here's what I have to say. And it just makes it easier, and then it allows us to say to staff, can you put that on the next agenda? Can you look into that? Whatever. We could do that after the comment, but we try not to address the speaker at all, because we don't want to engage in conversation.
Well, and the other reason, the other reason, and Noah, I think honestly, I think that is the best practice, because the other reason I don't even want to respond to agendized items is, why respond to it now? We're going to be deliberating it for 20 minutes.
It's not on the table. And I've heard that we can't, I've actually heard that you can't address agendized items, because, well.
It's best not to.
But if you're deliberating outside of the item being on the table, you might, it might be conceived as some violation. It's just easier, like I said, it's easier not to address anything. Just let them speak and move on with the meeting.
I agree.
I'd like to hear Mr. Smith's input on this.
I think you have to have it in the office, and you have to adhere to it. I think you really have to say, if that's going to be the practice, that's going to be the practice, and stick to it. Because once you start to give here or give there, we're going to get into a problem. I don't think.
Can you, can we talk to your viewpoint?
I'm sorry?
Mr. Spitz agreed with me that day, that day that that happened. He agreed with me, and he said that board members do have the right to respond. And I actually, I remember this happening when the last negotiations with the teachers' union was happening, and it was highly contentious, too. He was, there was a comment made, and Mr. Spitz had responded after the public comment as well. So I'm interested to know Mr. Spitz's opinion on
It's always been my recollection, going back, going way, way back, when I first got on the board, was always my understanding that a board member or a staff member could respond to a comment from the public at the beginning of the meeting during that period of time. However, there could not be dialogue. It could be a response, if the response, you know, if, you know, sometimes, sometimes you want to respond to something, sometimes it's appropriate to respond. However, that being said, I have no problem going along with Noah's suggestion. We rarely, rarely have responded to public comments. And I can go along with the, just to say, okay, we're just not going to at any time.
I feel the same way, because once you start to give an inch, it gets way out of hand. So better to have a policy that we're going to adhere to, and make it pretty strong that we don't buy, we don't not adhere to.
I would agree with that.
It's practice. It's not policy. Let's just make clear. The policy should.
But the point of the matter is, is if all of a sudden, we now have one person at one meeting doing, well, he did it at the last meeting, so why can't I do it at this meeting? I mean, you have to draw the line somewhere, Noah, and you're going to get into problems if you don't.
Michelle, I brought this up because I feel that we shouldn't respond, but I would have to say that in extenuating circumstances, if Mel felt the absolute desire that, and says to the board president, I, please, I need to respond to this, the policy still allows us to do that. And I'm not, what I want to be clear about is I'm advocating for a practice, not a change in policy.
Yeah, the policy says brief response. So that's your official policy. But if your practice is we don't respond, or we say something extremely brief, like, staff will get back to you on this, or why don't you meet with staff about this later, or I'll respond to you after the meeting, or let's have coffee next week, or, that's considered a brief response. So it just depends on how you guys want to determine what a brief response is. But I like your idea, Noah. I think it's best, if that's the, if that's what we strive to do, to not do anything but a brief response at the meeting, I think that's the best practice. Okay, so we're, we did informal board reports. Sharing expertise. Does anybody have any problem with that protocol? Okay. And trustee communications.
Yeah, that should be one, not two. The way that's written actually violates the Brown Act.
What are you talking about?
Under trustee, trustee trustee communication? Are we not?
I haven't got it, but that's okay.
Okay. Number one, under trustee, trustee communications, it says trustees may contact two other board members. That's not, it's one.
Ah, you know what?
Yeah, I have that.
You know why? That was me cutting and pasting for a seven-member board. Sorry about that. Okay, you're right, one other.
At the very bottom of that page, number four, I think the name of the school district has also been cut and pasted.
It's possible.
Yeah, speaking for the board or to the media or public, item number four, should be BHUSD. I get to be copywriter today.
Hey, we all had that board number one.
No, I don't think this is, I don't think that is applicable to you anyway.
I didn't even think about that. I thought, how did Deb come up with that number? She knows better than that. I didn't even think about a seven, seven-person board.
Seven-person board. Okay, let's go back. So trustee, trustee communications, how are you guys on that one?
Fine.
Trustees' role in public.
Yeah, I like it.
Yeah, I like all that.
Trustees' visiting schools and other district facilities.
We talked about that recently. We've decided to do that, remember?
Yep.
Okay. Speaking for the board to the media or public.
I think this goes back to that bylaw on media relations and public statements.
Okay. Oh, you're good with it?
Sorry, can you go back a little bit?
Yes. Speaking for the board on media or public, superintendent and board president are spokespersons for the district. The superintendent is the primary spokesperson for the district. The board president will address board positions and actions.
Yeah, same time.
Okay. Board members handling complaints, concerns from staff, community outside of board meetings.
I have no desire to change this, but I do want to talk about what it actually means.
Okay.
So the part where, sorry, I have to catch up on my notes. The part where it says number four, redirect, direct them back to the system at the appropriate level.
Yep.
That is a really important piece to me. I think that's part of what makes this whole community functional, especially right now in the time of this pandemic. So many people have reached out from a lot of different methods and modalities and things with concerns. And while we absorb it and internalize it and are able to consider it as board members, it's really important to be able to say, you really need to reach out to your teacher. If you don't get the result you want, please elevate it to your assistant principal, then to your principal, then to the district office, because that's, and that usually is where it falls apart, because a lot of parents are concerned that they don't want retaliation, or they don't want to, their kid's going to get upset, or whatever. But that's, that's what we're talking about when we say redirect, correct?
That is what we're talking about when they say redirect. But you can always remind them too, Tristan, that if they want to do this in a way that would not make the teacher aware of where it's coming from, the uniform complaint policy and the uniform complaint procedure form will allow them to report something and have a, you know, have a report of their outcome to them without them having to do this directly. That's always the backup. If they don't feel comfortable. Yeah, that's why it's the very first thing, uniform complaint policy, as required by law. Every district has a uniform complaint policy and usually a form that they could pick up at the district office and register their complaints in writing.
So let me ask you, I'm sorry, can I just, can I just, it's about the uniform complaint. Can I do a follow-up question, Tristan?
Sure.
So this is interesting, because we hear about this a lot, but nobody's ever instructed with the actual, you know, protocol of what this means. And it's really, I think, an important piece of information to understand for every board member, because I agree, a lot of parents don't want to pursue that conversation with their teacher, for whatever reason. And so it's an option, but how do we, how do we point them to that direction? Where is it? Because no one's ever told the board, we've had, you know, we've convened, but this is the first time that we're actually, I think for me anyways, hearing that there is actually a way that they could complain without having the name of the person involved.
Dr. Bregge, you're going to have to answer that question. I don't know where, who the keeper of the form is, or what your form process is. Different boards do it different ways.
Yeah, so we have a process at the district office. So, you know, if, it's usually, you know, not something like, you know, I'm upset with, the teacher said something about my, usually it's a little bit, it's more significant than some of the day-to-day, you know, usually the allegations are a little bit stronger. And so when that is brought to the district office, that's always, that is an option that we provide. And so we have somebody that's on staff that takes that complaint, that also then in student services, or Laura's department, and then they then get back to the student or the parent with the outcome. So it's confidential, it's, you know, I don't even know, because it's handled through student services so that, you know, it doesn't get out that the parent is complaining.
Okay, thank you for that. Thank you, Tristan. You can go on.
So the other piece that I kind of tied to this was in our Code of Ethics 9271. It's actually the second asterisk down, talks about, as board members, we have major commitments to the following. And so the one, the asterisk is next to individuals. It reads, each board member has a direct concern for every individual in the community. As an integral part of his or her duties, he, she represents the authority and responsibility of government. This authority must be exercised with as much care and concern for the least influential as for the most influential member of the community. The reason that this is important and that I wanted to bring it up for discussion in this context is that it seems to me like a couple times in the last few months, there has been a parent that reaches out to board members that they know, that says, this is my problem, I need your help to resolve it. And the next thing you know, it's an agenda item. And I think that that's not really the intent of the role of the board and the way that things should make their way to the agenda. I think it's really important that we are able to have these discussions. The staff should be bringing it to us, or there should be an opportunity for the board to discuss together if that's an agenda item that they want to put on, not just with two board members, because it ends up making an influential member of the community who has relationships with board members more impacted. who has relationships with board members more impactful and have more influence than members of the community that don't know or have relationships with the board members.
So I want to just address that concern, and, and it hap, you're right, it happens a lot. It happens, you know, it's not just in Beverly Hills, it happens everywhere. But you remember that the board needs to, has the right to approve or disapprove the agenda. You, you agreed at the very beginning of your meeting to either approve or disapprove the agenda. And if you feel like something is being agendized, that you don't feel is appropriate for being agendized, or hasn't been discussed with the rest of the board to be agendized, you can choose to pull that item and have the board discuss it before it becomes a, a, an actual agendas item that you take action on. Or you can choose to disapprove the agenda and not approve the agenda unless that item is deleted from the agenda. And you take a majority vote on that. So if you ever feel like an individual board member is using their influence to have an item agendized, and by the way, any one of you or any member of the public can ask for an item to be agendized. Where you have the power is to decide if you want it to be agendized or not. Because I could say to you tomorrow, I want you guys to add, to agendize Bring Your Pet to School Day. And I have the right as a person in the public to expect that that's on an agenda at some point in time and to hound you until it is on the agenda. And, but when it comes before you, if you think that that's a silly idea to talk about Bring Your Pet to School Day, you could say, we will approve this agenda if we pull item two, Bring Your Pet to School Day. And if you choose not to discuss it, it doesn't get discussed. So you've, you've done your lawful obligation, you've fulfilled your lawful obligation by placing it on the agenda. It's been placed on the agenda, but the board can choose to discuss or not discuss anything they want to discuss or not discuss. Your only legal obligation is to put it on the agenda if someone requests it, whether it be a board member or a community member.
Okay, fantastic, thank you.
Okay. Now, that being said, I would hope that all of you would, or that the board president and the superintendent would sort of have some oversight as to what gets agendized. And if they feel that it's a, you know, a partisan item, that they would choose not to agendize that item if they feel that the rest of the board wouldn't be in favor of it. But again, you always have the right to ask that an item be pulled if you think it has political implications or implications for favoritism. You have the right to either ask that it be pulled or ask that you discuss it before you pull it's, and discuss it separately from the agenda. Okay. You're welcome. Any other issues with regard to any of this complaint procedure?
Yeah, and I, I don't, I don't know what Tristan, if you could give me an example, Tristan? I mean, the, the agenda pretty much is made by the staff. I think very, I think that there's been very little, I, I can't imagine, I mean, I, I have had one risk request, I think, from, from the community since I've been president. But nothing having to do with, there's nothing, you know, having to do with contracts or anything like, I just want to really state that in, so that no one walks away thinking that we've put anything on the agenda where someone is financially benefiting, that I, I have no control on any of the contracts that have come to the district at all.
I'm not talking about talking about people in the community having access to board members because of their relationship versus any
I have no idea, I, I have not had any requests from anybody in the community for any board items. I always tell people, if you guys want, I tell, I tell the PTA, if there's something that you want us to discuss, you know, send me an email and I'm happy to put it on the agenda. I think that's a fair statement. I think that
Or you know what?
Well, anybody, anybody.
Isabel, Isabel, to keep yourself out of the middle, I always would ask them just to request the superintendent that this be agendized.
Sure, I always say CC copy the pres, yeah, absolutely, yeah, I have not.
And then you're not in the middle, because if you ask that something be agendized for a community member, then it looks like you're advocating for it. So it's best to have the community member just to ask that it be agendized. Because anybody who's a member of your community, now someone who's not within your district can't ask for something to be agendized, but anybody who's a member of your district can ask for something to be put on the agenda at any point in time. Again, like I said, you have the power, you have the power to say, you know, we don't want to discuss that. You know, one district I worked with had a lady who came at every meeting and requested that plumbing be, you know, lead in the pipes or something be put on the agenda. And the board just never agreed to, it was always agendized, but they never, they always pulled it. Because it wasn't something they wanted to discuss. Or I think it was lead in the water, because it wasn't anything within their purview. Okay, so we're okay with the process for board members handling community complaints. Okay, board self-evaluation, you guys have talked about trying to do that at least once every other year.
On that, on that item, board self-evaluation, I just want to say this, that this indicates every other year, we did, I think we have an established policy that this should happen every year, annually. However, uh, we've never done it even once.
Well, I can help you with that.
And, and we tried, and Mel, just to answer you, I remember that this was brought up in October, and I remember Deb saying to us to hold off because you were restructuring your format or your system.
We are, we still are.
Oh, wow.
No, we've, we've restructured it, it's, it's much more streamlined now. But, um, you've got six months to an election, I don't know that this would be the time, but if you want to do it, it's pretty simple, guys. You just ask CSBA to do a self-evaluation for you. You each get a questionnaire that comes to you via email. It's 62 questions, I believe. You fill it out, and then CSBA takes all that data and puts it into one, one format so you could see where the board feels the majority of you feel you have problems, where the majority of you feel you have strengths, and you can walk through it. And it only costs $200. It's not, it's not a big deal, it does take a lot of time.
I think it's a great process, I recall seeing that. Without that, you're just getting together and it turns into a bull session.
Yeah, well, when you get through this little crisis here in the next month or so, let me know and I'll get it started for you. And it's, like I said, it's pretty streamlined, it's pretty easy to do. And if it comes back that there's a lot of red flags, then you might want to have me facilitate it. But if it comes back and it looks pretty good, you could just look it over and talk it over amongst yourselves.
I like your optimism about you think this is going to be over in a month or so.
I know, I, well, that's, that's sort of an out loud prayer, if you will. Okay, new board member and staff orientation. The board is committed to developing a formal onboarding process for new board members, potential board candidates and staff to ensure understanding of district-wide policy procedures and strategic plans.
That should be, yes, I think it would have helped me a lot. I don't remember that there was such a thing at the time.
Good.
Tristan, do you remember that?
No, it was kind of like, just be quiet and observe and you'll learn.
Well, this is sort of the first step, you guys, having a governance handbook is one of the
That, that was the impression I got.
Yeah. Having the governance handbook is one of the first steps in a board orientation. And in fact, many boards that I've worked with have given out the governance handbook to people who wanted to run for the board so that they sort of understood a lot of this stuff. Because a lot of people run and think that they can get on the board and, and make things happen by themselves. And once they read the governance handbook, they realize that it's very much a collaborative process. So having a governance handbook is a, is a first step in, in doing that. Okay, and the last item is superintendent evaluation. You agree that superintendent evaluation is ongoing, an ongoing action, and you strive to have a quarterly dialogue with regard to how things are doing with regard to your goals.
I think it's good.
And that, my friends, is it. You have, you have accomplished the task. So next step would be, I'll send this to Dr. Bregge today if he wants to insert that language from a couple of the bylaws that we, that we referenced. And if you have them, give them to him so he has that to insert. And then I would encourage you to take this document to your next board meeting, agendize it as an action item and vote, please.
Can we, can we get the, the format in it so that it has like a, by sections, like an index? I mean, a table of contents, yeah.
It, it does, it should, right there at the front, hopefully.
Yeah.
You could do any, you can have it in any format you want, clean it up, check my spelling, whatever you need to do.
Okay, so can we get from Dr. Bregge, or how, how do we get the self-evaluation? The board evaluation, how do we pursue that? Do we, is that something that, is that something that Pam can do, Dr. Bregge, or?
Any one of you just contact me and I'll get the ball rolling for you. I start it, I put together a confirmation, just like I do when I'm doing a workshop for you. I send in a confirmation to the, to CSBA and say, this board that I've worked with wants to do a self-evaluation, they want you to open it for the question. Usually we leave it open for two weeks, so you guys have a two-week timeframe or a 10-day timeframe to complete the questionnaire, and then they'll provide you with the, with the results. Anything you want.
I know we're looking at this page right here, so, which is on your copy. I did add Mel to my copy, but it was left off of here. But, uh, what, you know, we'll change, obviously, to do the reorganization, I'll change all this. But Mel was left off of this, so we'll clean that up.
Okay, sounds good.
Debbie?
Yes?
There, there was, there, there's, how can I say this? There's maybe an elephant in the room that we haven't talked about. And yet I think we all know, and I think the superintendent knows, that we have a problem in our, our board that, I guess you could put it in one word, called distrust. And I've been giving that a lot of thought. I know that I had an exchange of correspondence with the superintendent, and he actually referred to it. His words were a lack of trust and how serious it is. And I've given that a lot of thought. And I, I would like to make a brief statement about it.
Please, Mel, so that's the most important thing you can have.
Well, let me say this then. I think you all know, I'm, I'm well into my 14th year on this board. Having been elected in 1970, re-elected in 74, and then elected again in 2015. During those years, I have served with about 15 colleagues. So I've, I've, I've got a lot of experience in boardmanship. Given that experience, I can tell you this with certainty. Trust among board members is a must for the board to perform optimally. And there is one and only one requirement of a board member to be trusted by his or her colleagues. Just one requirement. And that is compliance with the board bylaws. It's as simple as that. Distrust because of non-compliance with board bylaws has nothing to do with personalities. It doesn't matter who's on the board or who will be on the board in the future. Board members who do not comply with the bylaws lose the trust and respect of their colleagues. And the result is a degraded deliberative process and board performance. And compliance with the bylaws is not limited to behavior at board meetings. It must be adhered to when communicating in every medium, email, social media, letters to the editor, live dialogue with district stakeholders. Unfortunately, before I joined this board in 2015 and ever since, some board members have not complied with the bylaws. Consequently, while we have moved forward and accomplished a lot, the workload has been overly burdensome for board members and staff alike. And the public, our public perceives varying degrees of disorder and dysfunction. So how can we establish trust among us? Merely acknowledging the importance of trust in a governance handbook will not bring it about. Only adherence to the bylaws will do it. And that's what we really all need to commit to. Adhering to all the bylaws without exception. We can, how we move forward from here, I mean, we, we can, we can, we can get together and have a discussion of instances of non-compliance so that we can argue it out or discuss it. If we did that, it should be done in a way that is not railing against any board member, but to be helpful and to lead the way to agreement and trust and optimal performance. But until we can do that, we will not be performing optimally. That's my statement.
Thank you, Mel, that was very profound. I'm going to leave you guys with this. I just read a great book called The Power, The Speed of Trust by Stephen Covey. And it speaks to the importance of trust in any high-functioning organization. If you don't like to read, we've got lots of time on our hands these days. You can download it as an audiobook and listen to it in your car, or listen to it in your living room. But that would be a great exercise for the board to do, is to, to download that book and listen to it. The Speed of Trust by Stephen Covey, very profound. It really shaped a lot of great thoughts for me about conveying to boards than, and, and I couldn't have said it more eloquently than you did, Mel. It is the most important factor in boards working together, is not only having trust in one, one another, but your community having trust in you and the work that you do. So strive for that. And just the very, the very fact that you were willing to and, and, and had the trust to share that with your fellow board members smoots volumes for the way that you operate as a board member, and I admire that very much. So I want to thank you all for spending the time with me today. It was great to see you all again. And please don't hesitate to let me know if there's anything I can do to help you in the future.
Thank you, Deb.
Okay.
Thank you, Deb, for being here with us today.
Thank you all.
Thank you for your help.
And thank you all.
All right, hope to see you all soon, and we're all going to weather this storm together, guys. Look forward to seeing you in person again sometime very soon.
Okay.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Deb.
Thank you, everyone, bye-bye.
Bye.